Good afternoon, everybody. Warm welcome to today's meeting of the Children and Families Scrutiny Board. My name is Billy Flynn. I'm the Chair of the Scrutiny Board. I'm also councillor for Adlin Worfdale Ward in the north of the city. Bear in mind that the meeting is going to be broadcast on the council website today, so that anyone who can't be here today can watch us live, if it's worth their while, that is of course. I'd like to start, as usual, first by introducing ourselves. If we go round starting at the left, Karen.
Councillor Karen Renishaw, representing our city of Robinhood. Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon, everybody. John Garvanny, councillor Horstford Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Raymond Jones, representing Horstford. I'm a substitute today.
Good afternoon, councillor Eleanor Thompson-Gaisling-Rauden Ward, also here as a substitute. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's councillor David Jenkins from Kilimbeconseacroft Ward.
Afternoon. I'm Emma Flint, councillor in Wheatwood.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Oliver Edwards, representing Gaisley and Rauden.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Inkele Manaka, representing Berman Thompson Richmond Hill.
Good afternoon, Miriam Huck, interim strategic lead for Sand and Chief Officer.
Good afternoon, councillor Helen Hayden, executive member for Children and Families.
Good afternoon, Phil Evans, Deputy Director in Children's and Families.
Good afternoon, Rebecca McCormack, Chief Officer for Education.
Good afternoon, Farah Khan, Deputy Director, Children's Social Care.
Good afternoon, I'm Jo Harding. I'm Director of Nursing and Quality for the West Yorkshire Integrated Care Board here in Leeds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chief Inspector Steve Dodds, I'm the Leeds District Commander for West Yorkshire Police.
Good afternoon. My name's Phil Conran. I'm the Assistant Manager for Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership Business Unit.
Good afternoon, Shina School Third Sector Rep for Young Lives League.
Hi, I'm Maria Adams. I'm Leeds Parent Care Reform.
Good afternoon, Tim Goodall, councillor of Headingen Hyde Park.
Good afternoon, councillor Rick Downs, Ottley and Eden Ward.
Hello. Ryan Stevenson, councillor for Harwood Ward.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm Rob Clayton. I'm the scrutiny adviser to the board.
Thanks very much, everybody. A very warm welcome to those from outside of the council today. Very welcome. Nice to see people from outside and get their views on the issues that are particularly important to them. If we just move on to the first items on the agenda, Rob, could you take us through why? Move on to five.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just the usual procedural items that we take each scrutiny board meeting. I'll just run through them, Chair. Item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, and there are no appeals at today's meeting. Item two is items for exclusion of the press and the public, and there are no such items at today's meeting. Item three is late items of business, and there are no late items of business today, Chair. Item four is declarations of interest, and I will just briefly pause to allow any members to declare under the Leeds City Council's Code of Conduct. I shall take silence as none, Chair. And then item five is apologies for today's meeting. We have apologies from councillor Khan with councillor Thompson attending as a substitute, and councillor Heselwood with councillor Jones attending as a substitute, and we also have apologies from Helen Bellamy, Nick Toons, Andrew Graham, Anas Kitu, and Tony Britton, who are our co-opted members. And then lastly, Chair, we have apologies from Julie Longworth, the Director of Children and Families, and also for item seven, David Derbyshire sends his apologies for the LSCP annual report. Thank you.
Thanks very much indeed, Rob. Just before we move on to the minutes, I'd be very grateful for the old and bold, or not so bold amongst us, if you could actually speak directly into the mics when you're talking. It's a long way from here to the bottom end of the table. Hello, Helen. And it can be quite difficult, and I've got my reading glasses on, so it's quite difficult to even see who's at the bottom end of the table. So please do speak directly into the microphone. Don't be shy. We all want to hear what you want to say. Okay, moving on to item six, which are the minutes of the last meeting on the 11th of September this year. It starts on page seven of your pack, and I'll go through, as usual, each page. Does anybody have any comments on the first page of the minutes? Second page? Third page? Fourth page? Seventh? And ninth? That's a relief. Thanks very much indeed. Would someone like to propose that they are an accurate record of the minutes of the meeting held on the 11th of September? Rick, thanks very much. Seconded, councillor Rachel. Okay. Thanks very much indeed. We'll move on to the first substantive item, which is the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership Annual Report. Councillor Hayden, do you want to kick off on this one and then pass on to whoever wants to speak about it next? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I'm really pleased to be able to introduce the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership Annual Report 2425. So this report sets out the work of the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership over the past year. It highlights the strength of our multi-agency arrangements and the shared commitment to keeping children safe across health, education, police, and social care. And I'd just really like to thank our partners for being here today and to give their wealth of experience and knowledge to scrutiny as well. The ILAX 2025 report found strong ownership and accountability across safeguarding partnership, and this really reflects the maturity of our safeguarding culture, built on trusted relationships between partners, shared accountability, and a commitment to listening to children's voices. The report also shows how the partnership continues to evolve in response to emerging risks, national reform, and learning from local practice. We will never be satisfied. We will always be learning, and we will always strive to make sure that we are aware of everything and that we respond to everything appropriately. It's a really strong foundation and one that continues to adapt to meet the needs of children and families across Leeds. I'll leave it there, and I don't know if Farah or any of the partners want to come in as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's just to provide a bit of an overview of why we produce an LSCP annual report, and if anybody's read the copy of Working Together to Safeguard Children 2023, it's a rather gripping read, but it's very important and very central to what we undertake as a partnership across Leeds. So the Working Together to Safeguard Children 2023 makes it clear that we are obliged to publish an annual report every single year. We've got to make sure that annual report is published on our website, so it's publicly available, so anybody can see what's happening in terms of the working arrangements and the strengths of the safeguarding system across Leeds. We're also obliged to provide Ofsted and the national panel a copy of our annual reports as well. So what you've got in front of you here is the 2425 output of the work from the Safeguarding Children's Partnership. I hope you've had the opportunity to read it. It's a great success, I think, yet again for the Safeguarding Partnership, and we've got colleagues here as well who can answer any questions.
Okay, thanks very much, Phil. Just before we open it out to questions and comments, there are a couple of things I'd like to sort of raise, and they're not specifically germane to this report, but they're, I think, germane to these kind of reports, whether it's children, adults, or NHS, or various other things. Historically, there have always been issues or challenges when you've got a multi-agency approach to any kind of sort of safeguarding. Interested to know how, you know, how it actually sort of works in practice. Councillor Hayden will know, because we discussed it at a previous meeting. At the recent Ofsted report, there was a mention that multi-agency working was improving, which suggested that it had somewhere to improve from. And of course, if it isn't working properly, when things do go catastrophically wrong, it's usually because of a lack of communication or correspondence or whatever between the various people. Linked to that is, you know, availability of data, you know, basically real-time information, intelligence, very difficult to come by. Intelligence itself, performance monitoring, that kind of stuff, all sort of feeds into the multi-agency sort of approach and how that actually works in practice. And finally, the safeguarding of particularly vulnerable groups, you know, the risks of sort of under identification of disabled children, for argument's sake, say, and those with sort of very complex needs, which tend to always seem to miss out. So when your colleagues are sort of speaking about it, I'd like someone to perhaps cover those in part. Thank you. So who would like to speak next? Farah?
Thank you, Chair. I want to start off, and I'm sure Steve and Jo, as partners in the exec, might want to add to this in relation to the multi-agency part of the working. We've done a lot of work over the past few years, and if David was here... Sorry, let me just move this a bit closer. Is that better? And if David Derbyshire, our independent scrutineer, was here, he would, I am sure, be saying the same thing, that we've done a lot of work to look at where we come together, how we make decisions, where we deal with in particular serious safeguarding allegations, but also how we strengthen and empower and enable our workforce to come together in multi-agency decision-making. And what's reassuring is the last few inspections, in particular the JATI and the Ofsted inspection, reflect the strength of the multi-agency arrangements we already have. In particular, if we think about our front door, our integrated front door, and decision-making, safeguarding decision-making, but also where we have more complex issues such as child exploitation. We are multi-agency and strong partnership working isn't about always agreeing, it's about having the ability to challenge each other, to raise concerns with each other. It's about considering all the information and the expertise that different professionals bring to that space. I am a member of the review advisory group, and we look at incidents or learning nationally, locally, where there has been serious, where there has been quite significant serious harm. And I want to share that in that space, you know, I chair that group with colleagues from health, senior colleagues, and the police, that bringing the strength of the different perspectives helps with decision-making, and we land on the same space and we take learning across our organisation. And what happens is that informs the plan for the safeguarding partnership learning, but also the priorities for the partnership. So I know the report refers to the priorities, talks about professional curiosity, talks about neglect and other areas. And I think the strength of our partnership is that we understand those, and those priorities come from those, and then our partnership response is driven by those. I don't know if Jo or Steve, you want to add anything on the partnership part?
Thank you. I was going to mention the priorities that we've identified as a partnership, which collectively over a space of a number of months, we sought intelligence and information and in fact used data to determine where we, as a partnership, wanted to focus on what seemed to be the most vulnerable groups who potentially are at risk of harm in relation to being safeguarded. What we were very keen to do for one of the priorities was to look at the impact of domestic abuse, but from the perspective of the child, because often the initiatives are focusing on abuse within the family, but not the impact that it would have on, and does have on children and young people. Also, following our JATI, where we looked at children and young people subject to serious youth violence and crime, what we wanted to make sure that we did was focus around the areas of teenagers who are at risk from exploitation. And we do know that across the city that they are a vulnerable group, often criminalised when in actual fact they are being exploited. And then the third area we wanted to look at in more detail, and the new reforms allow us, the vehicle to do that, is our family help model. This is where we support families with early intervention to prevent the need for children and young people to come into the children in need and therefore the safeguarding systems. So as a priority, and the other groups that we look at, the vulnerable groups such as those with special education, special educational needs, are also prioritised through our processes and systems. But we deliberately chose three areas where, across all partnerships, we could put some focus. That doesn't mean it's at the expense of any of the other vulnerable groups, but it was important that we had a focus for the coming year. Thank you.
If I may, then, from a policing perspective and as a member of the LSCP exec, Chair, you mentioned a number of things in your opening, which I know colleagues have spoken about so far, but I would just add to that. The JATI certainly highlighted the strong leadership at a strategic level throughout the partnership, and also commented on the links at all levels of the partnership between multi-agencies, which I think is something that is really reassuring for me. In terms of when things go wrong, none of us want anything to go wrong, and so we have to be absolutely clear and absolutely careful that everybody across the partnership, whatever their role, is looking and placing the welfare and the wellbeing of children at the absolute centre of everything that they do. Farah referenced the review advisory group. That is one way that when serious cases are divulged, that we can look at the response of the partnership and to learn those lessons and to try and put that into place. And I think it's fair to say, from the strong relationship that we have at a senior level across the exec, we are constantly challenging ourselves and asking ourselves relevant pertinent questions around the delivery of service that protects and puts children at the heart of everything that we do across the city. As an exec, and certainly one of the first things I was involved in when I joined the group on appointment as the commander three years ago for Leeds, was we took national guidance around our structures and our subgroups and how that links into the wider partnership and how we bring key professionals together to discuss. And with the help of David Derbyshire, as our independent scrutineer, have restructured and redeveloped the approach of the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership over the last couple of years to get it into a much stronger and better place in terms of supporting children going forward.
Thanks very much indeed, Steve. In fact, I'm meeting with the independent adviser next week. It was unfortunate he couldn't be here today, but I went through his report in some sort of detail, and you've covered it very well there, indeed. Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else at the top end like to add anything else before we move on to questions or comments? No? Okay. Members?
Thank you, Chair. On page 37 of the report, where it's talking about the audit that was carried out, it actually says that referrals from practitioners were, I'm going to summarise the paragraph, were lacking in some information passed on to social workers, and that a piece of work was carried out to try and sort this issue out. Could we have some more detail around that and the success and/or not of it, and how it's been monitored?
Farah? Oh, sorry. Who would like to speak on that one? Steve, yeah?
Yeah, I think that relates to the HMIC FRS Inspection Peel Assessment Report for West Yorkshire Police, revealed some concerns around the multi-agency auditing of information that was put into the local authority from police officers. So this is an opportunity for operational police officers whilst they are out and about on their duties to identify concerns and to feed those in through the local authority. What the audit was in response to was to look at a sample number of cases to evaluate whether or not the HMIC recommendations around introducing that joint triage of those submissions would have benefited children and young people. There were a small number that were found could have benefited from that initial triage and that initial discussion with child social care, but most of those were, from a point of view of just earlier notification to social workers. Of all the cases reviewed, none of them were found to have lacked in terms of delivery and practice and service relating to those children at the centre of that.
Farah, would you like to come in?
Yes, please, Chair. Thank you. And just to add to that in relation to reassure, and so as one of the subgroups is around the audit and review subgroup, and the way things are monitored and improvements is audits are repeated after a particular amount of time to see that the learning has been incorporated. So the learning from audits is shared with practitioners and with managers, and then that's repeated across the partnership. The front door, our integrated front door, they also have an operational group that meets regularly, that looks at any issues that might arise, how to strengthen. So they meet monthly to kind of oversee that work as well. But in addition to that, this was undertaken by the audit and review group, which will then look at this again in the future as part of their audit schedule.
Councillor Garvanny, are you happy with that? Okay. Any other questions, queries, comments?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow on from councillor Garvanny's question. On page 36, areas for further development, identified a need for clarity for all practitioners about when and what consent was needed to share information when making a referral to children services about safeguarding concerns. So this is in relation to domestic abuse. So it'd be quite helpful to know a bit more about what's being done in terms of making sure that agencies are all working together, that agencies are, all have a similar understanding of the thresholds, at what point, at what point a referral needs to be made. So I wondered if you could tell us a bit more about, tell us a bit more about that multi-agency working and how different agencies are making sure that they're all singing from the same hymn sheet, as it were?
I can talk from the perspective of children's social work service in the front door, but also having been at the front door myself, understanding it operationally. We've got to recognise we're a huge city with practitioners, volunteers, families who make referrals to our front door. And so part of the ongoing work that's occurred in Leeds and that's been really successful is partners meeting to look at contacts, to look at referrals at the front door, and involvement in that. And so, for example, our front door team through our education safeguarding team have got links with DSLs across the city, if we think about schools and referrals. Police and health colleagues, that operational group that I mentioned, they look at contacts together. We have a weekly referral review meeting that's a multi-agency meeting, and that's happened in Leeds, I think, since 2010. So, you know, and it's been really successful and adopted by other, some other local authorities as well, where referrals, a sample of referrals are reviewed weekly in that partnership space, so that learning can be picked up in real time and inform more longer-term themes. So that's the work that's done to provide consistency and so that learning is shared, but also that people understand kind of that we can strengthen referrals. And the whole strength, one of the strengths is that we have experienced a permanent social workers at our front door, who are able to have the conversations with professionals. We've benefited from stability at our front door, who are able to have the conversations with professionals to make sure that the right information is shared.
I think also, just to supplement that, you're right, we do have a very large wide breadth of urgencies, particularly in health. We often use the word 'health', but actually, health includes GP practices, ambulance services, hospital services, mental health services. So in order for us to make sure that our staff, our frontline staff are operationally engaged with each other, understand each other's roles and responsibilities, we have a shared programme of training, statutory mandatory training, but also across the year, as well as, you know, in safeguarding week, we make sure that we have communications and publications that work across all our partner agencies, police, social care, and health, to make sure our professionals, our clinical professionals have a responsibility around their continuing professional development, and topics such as domestic abuse are included as part of their updated and learning. But in principle, where possible, we design our training and development events in a multi-partnership approach.
Do you want to come in, Steve?
I think something additional, just to lay on some further information for you, is how one of the areas that we're looking at, domestic abuse, is something that sort of touches on different partnerships across Leeds as well. So what we are doing is bringing together the Adults Board, Safer Leeds Executive as well, and ourselves to think about some of those cross-cutting themes, to think, how can we tackle this together efficiently and more effectively as well? And that covers a much bigger and wider workforce as well. So we are looking, you know, domestic abuse isn't something the LSC could be managed on its own, it needs to be done in partnership across the city with those who are also invested in improving the outcomes for those families and children where domestic abuse is a feature.
Yeah, just to add to what colleagues have said, so it is a priority across the LSCP, but it's also a priority across the partnership. There are a number of processes and safeguards in place around domestic abuse, starting certainly from a policing point of view, with the involvement of police supervisors with the attendance at initial domestic abuse incidents and an assessment of the risk and grading of those incidents, that they are then reviewed. Farah talked about the open door, the high-risk cases are reviewed within 24 hours within the front door to make sure that we have taken the appropriate level and focus. From a policing point of view, the focus around domestic abuse is front and centre, and it is a priority for us as an organisation. Our attendance times at both emergency and priority graded domestic incidents have improved over this policing year. Our outcomes for victims have improved significantly over this year. And the report does talk about the use of domestic abuse prevention orders. We have seen particular increases across Leeds in the use of domestic prevention orders, also, sorry, domestic violence prevention orders issued by the magistrate's court and authorised by a superintendent whilst perpetrators are in custody, which helps to protect victims even further. In summary, and from a partnership point of view, it is wider than just the exec, but we regularly challenge and we regularly reassure ourselves as an exec that the lessons are being learnt and that the people within the wider partnership are aware of the concerns that we have and that domestic abuse is put at the forefront of the priorities of the work that we do.
Thanks very much. Councillor Edwards, would you like to come back?
Thank you, and thank you for those comprehensive answers. I did want to ask a second question on page 33. So the self-assessment activity highlighted areas for development. So I think there are some very positive points in there, and it's encouraging that... So I think there's some very positive points in there, and it's encouraging that those areas are recognised. I'd like to pick up on the third point. There was a need to hear the voice of those with lived experience. So can you tell us a bit more about how that's going to be implemented into procedures and policies and how those voices will be included as part of any conversations?
It's absolutely integral to the work that we do, that we do listen to those that are experiencing our processes and our organisations and are subject to child protection procedures and are being safeguarded. We've considered carefully across the year how we do this better. We've had a number of events. We had a takeover event where we listened to the children and young people, those that have special educational needs, talk to us about their experience of what it feels like to be safe or not to be safe. They're always fascinating events. We learnt such a lot about where individuals feel safe in the city and where they don't. And we were able to take back some pledges of how we would speak to our colleagues around, you know, bus routes and parks and other facilities that may not be conducive to individuals feeling safe, particularly at night. We also had another really informative event with children and young people who have experienced the care system. And Steve, myself and Julie and David listened to small groups of young people talking to us about how they'd experienced our services. And again, you can't, until you hear people's experiences, you can't believe that you understand them. And so again, we were able to take back a set of actions and are very grateful to those young people for availing themselves to us, because it's never easy to do that. So as councillor Hayden said at the beginning, we are never complacent, we will always try and improve, and we'll continue in to look at how we can make sure over the course of the next year that we further engage children and young people to guide us and advise us in our priorities and our work as we move forward.
councillor Edward? Happy? Okay, thanks very much. I have two more councillors on. Councillor Stevenson first, and councillor Mayor, France Mayor.
Thank you Chair. When we had this report come to us last year, I raised a specific question about what Baroness Casey has since described or paraphrased as her words were Asian grooming gangs. At that point, the answer that was given to me was that the reporting question was looking back over the previous twelve months, so it wasn't particularly in scope. And I think I made the point that we were probably expecting something on that this time. Having read the report, there is only one reference to grooming gangs in the report at page thirty-nine, which merely says that the Silver Mace is mindful of Baroness Casey's forthcoming report, and once published will be considered by the partnership looking forward. So my first question is, during this report period from April twenty-four to twenty-five, prior to the Casey report being published, was any audit carried out on cases involving child sexual exploitation based on the offender's ethnicity or background between that time?
Who'd like to take that one?
Yeah, so from a policing perspective, I think it's fair to say that the West Yorkshire Police, the local authority, the NHS and our partners take child sexual exploitation and abuse extremely seriously and consider it a top priority. As an organisation, West Yorkshire Police has significant experience in dealing and investigating such matters, and we have central governance in terms of oversight at force level of the five operational districts of this particular area of focus and priority. That is headed up by a nationally accredited senior investigating officer, a detective superintendent, and is then also supported by our safeguarding central governance unit that look at national guidance and compliance across the county in terms of our approach to investigating such matters. That, there is significant scrutiny and oversight of all of that. We have discussed it as an LSCP exec as well in terms of the data that comes there. The focus of investigations and the incidence of convictions relating to grooming gangs are not significant in terms of Leeds, they feature significantly other parts of the county. And whilst there have been investigations into such matters in Leeds and convictions, we have, there have been nine defendants that have been convicted to a total of sixty-three years and nine months for non-recent complex child sexual exploitation and abuse, as we would term it. It is something that we discuss, is something that is reviewed at a county level on a regular basis. But as I say, from a Leeds perspective, it is not something that is of a similar level of incident as we're seeing in other parts of the county.
Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else want to comment on that before I come back to councillor Stevenson?
I think it's important to clarify, so we meet with police colleagues regularly as the review advisory, I meet with police colleagues regularly, and I think it's important to clarify the time period that those convictions that Steve has referenced apply to, they're not in the time period that you mentioned councillor Stevenson, therefore they were historic convictions, but we work closely to look at patterns, to look at monitoring of all child sexual and criminal exploitation cases. And that's why youth violence, along with child exploitation, is a priority for the partnership.
councillor Stevenson?
So I was just reminded that our previous independent scrutiny chair, Dame Jasvinda Sanghera, said recently that any local authority that claims not to have significant grooming gang cases should be the top of the list for inspection. So when I hear comments like it's not significant in Leeds, it raises an alarm, because it comes back to councillor Hayden's initial point, quote earlier, when she said, we always make sure we're aware of everything. But the point is, we need to look at the things we're not aware of, and that's the point of the Casey. Well councillor Hayden, you can huff and puff, but this is Baroness Casey's...
I did not say that.
You literally said, I literally wrote down your quote, we always make sure we're aware of everything and safeguarding.
No, I did not say that. I would never say that. And we'll come back and look at it. I did not say that. We want, we should try to be aware of everything. I absolutely know that I'm not aware of everything.
Well, Chair, when we can go back through the recording, councillor Hayden clearly said, we always make sure we're aware of everything. That's a point of record, and perhaps at the next meeting, when I play that back to you councillor Hayden, you can apologise on record. But the point I was making was, the whole point of the Casey report was it's to look at the things that we're not aware of. And that's how this issue has come about essentially. Also, when we're told that the issue is a top priority, but then we look at the two audits, or the audit themes that have taken place in the last year, and this isn't one of them, it strikes me as difficult to see how it is a top priority if we're not shining the light on it. Now, I understand why there would have been a need to wait for Casey report that was published in June, so granted the time has passed. So my second question would be, since the publication of the Casey report in June, has the LSCP asked for or been involved in any audit of cases since then to try and look back and see if anything was missed? And I say that in the context of Scotland Yard yesterday announcing it was reopening nine thousand cases of CSE to make those very same assessments.
Who'd like to take that one?
I'll take it first, thank you. I mean, we can argue about what I said, I would never say that we are aware of everything. We are a city of eight hundred thousand people, there are a hundred and seventy-six thousand children. And actually, what I said, and you know, we are never complacent, we are always learning, and if anything comes up that we are not aware of, we will tackle it and respond to it appropriately, which we have always, which we have always up to now done. We cannot, but I absolutely trust in this partnership that we never don't address something when it comes to our attention. There are whole hosts of thousands of professionals in health, in our police, in our social care that are working with and looking after, and we are shining a light on sexual and other criminal exploitation of children. It is our priority, and as partners have said here this afternoon, it is our priority. We are shining a lighter, we do regular, there are regular audits, and any serious cases come to me, and we discuss them, and the LSCP exec discusses them. And then a whole partnership down to, you know, right across our city, any agency, and I have to say, it's a real strength that education has joined the LSCP, because that's where children are visible to professionals and their safeguarding is very much kind of monitored within our schools across the city. So it is, we are, the Casey report is very, very important to us, and we will follow whatever we need, and if any investigation needs to be done. The data is not, does not show a significant issue in Leeds. That is what the police data shows us, that's what the criminal data shows us. We are not complacent, we know that the children in Leeds are being criminally exploited and sexually exploited, and that is, we know that is happening, and we are doing everything we can and will continue to do, to work our fingers to the bone to make sure that we can stop that. But we will never be in a position where we will be able to say it is not happening in Leeds, because predators will always prey on children, and we will do our level best to make sure that that stops and we can prevent it where we can.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Farah, would you like to come in again?
Yes Chair, thank you. I think when we talk about, it's important to remember when we talk about child exploitation, be that sexual exploitation or criminal exploitation, that our workforce understand the characteristics and presentation of children that are exploited. Because what we know from national learning, in particular where adult victims have come forward, is there are often signs there that were probably ignored by people working with them. So we take national learning very seriously as well. Our LSCP training offer around exploitation is comprehensive, as is our organisation's training offer, and that's we, we work to update that. And I'll give an example of, you know, some work that through the LSCP we've been doing with Professor Carling Furman around risk outside the home, around understanding how to look at disruption work, so that the focus is treating the child as a victim and understanding how to protect children from those who abuse children. So despite not having significant any concerns around this being child sexual exploitation or group-based child sexual exploitation as a concern in Leeds, we're not complacent about that. So we continue to develop and offer training and support our workforce and use national learning to drive those messages and, you know, any national learning from the National Safeguarding, Children's Safeguarding Partnership, as well as the Casey report etc. And so I just want to reassure councillor Stevenson and the board that we're not complacent in learning, we refresh our learning and our offer for our practitioners, and our priorities have come from the data and the issues that we know are significant for Leeds, and that's why we've chosen those priorities. But often criminal exploitation and sexual exploitation can go hand in hand, as can youth violence. And so part of keeping our workforce trained, understanding any themes, any learning nationally, and incorporating that into our workforce development offer is a priority for us, and refreshing that will always remain a priority for our individual agencies, but also for us as a collective.
Thank you Farah. councillor Stevenson, you want to come back?
Yeah, and Farah, I have no doubt that knowing the senior leadership team in Leeds, that that national learning will be embedded in terms of staff workforce training, that's not, that's not in doubt. The issue I keep coming back to here is essentially what the Casey report summarised, is that the top table keeps talking about the stats show what we know, it's not a significant issue in Leeds. But the point of the report, and presumably the point that the Met Police have just got to yesterday by re-examining nine thousand cases, is to go and check what has been missed and what themes have been missed and need to come through. That's the whole point of the learning from the Casey report, was about the unknown unknowns. That's what you've got to go back and look at. So I'll ask the question again, because nobody answered it. Since June, or from now going forward, will there be either a request from the LSCP exec or something probably by the police on their own to go back and review cases previously, as the Met Police announced they're going to do yesterday here in West Yorkshire, to make sure that we can confidently say, having looked back, we now know this is the position based on the data. And second to that, when councillor Hayden said that we will, we're always looking, and this remains a top priority for us, my question is, where's the evidence? Because the report we've got before us does not mention grooming gangs once, other than we're going to consider the Casey report. So platitudes are fine, saying we take it seriously, but as a scrutiny board, we want to see the evidence of what you've actually done and what the outcomes are.
Thank you councillor Stevenson. I think the first point that you raised is fairly germane in the sense of, is there, are there any plans to review any of the cases that have been considered in the past? If you're not in a position to answer that today, or don't feel appropriate to answer today, then please let me know. And the second point, I think we might be able to deal with correspondence. Anyone like to take that one up?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things there. I mean, first councillor, your initial question was around grooming gangs, which is what my data and my answer around the investigations and convictions was based around. This has then developed into a conversation more appropriately around the focus and the investigation of child sexual exploitation as a crime. We absolutely do take it seriously, and it certainly isn't a platitude in terms of sitting here and saying that.
Sorry to interject, sorry, can I just track, because the point was, the question was, that the Met Police are opening nine thousand cases of child sexual exploitation to be reviewed to make sure that those cases weren't group-based child sexual exploitation. So the differential is tick the box as CSE, but miss the box around whether it is group-based, and that's what the review in the Met Police are doing. My question is, will we now be doing that in West Yorkshire?
Thank you.
Yes, and I was trying to get to that point and answer your question. So we absolutely do, and I talked to my initial answer around the structure that we have in the county in terms of a review, and there is constant review led by a senior detective around looking at cases on a regular basis. There are significant convictions and work that goes on in this area that is a result of continual review of those cases, both as victims comes forward, but also as well as disclosures are made. victims comes forward, but also as well as disclosures are made around investigations that allow us to then go back out and revisit people that have previously been involved in such cases. So that goes on on a regular basis.
Councillor Stevenson? Okay, thank you very much indeed. Right, I have one, just one more before we come on to this councillor mayor.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Mine's just more of a comment to say, basically, what fabulous work you're doing, joined up across the city, caring for our vulnerable young people. With that, you know, it's nice to see the growth upon you of what we're, of what you're trying to do. But also the coming together and creating a unit, a support unit for our most vulnerable children in this city is extremely, extremely important. And also opening that network and having the education team, getting fully integrated with it as well. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that we're doing. And together, you know, we will continue trying our best to protect the most vulnerable young people of our city, especially those young girls, you know, that are seen through adultification. And, and all those barriers are breaking down, and the stigmatization through the partnership works is really, really important, especially with the domestic violence and everything. I just want to say thank you.
Pressing the wrong button. I don't think there's any response needed to that. I've got three additional sort of speakers now, councillor Jenkins, councillor Manaka, and Shinaaz, in that order. So councillor Jenkins.
Okay, I've got about three issues. First of all, autism and neurodiversity. So there's only one mentioned in the report on autism, is there a cure for autism? But I'd have thought autism and neurodiversity, in the sort of casework that most of us have, is a quite significant issue for many young people, many children. And the way in which parents cope with that condition is quite, quite challenging at times, particularly in terms of housing and so on. So I just wondered if that could be a theme that you could look at in next year's report. Secondly, because I've sat on the Youth Justice Board, I've always been concerned about Wetherby. And it's heartening to know that Parva hasn't been used as a, as a restraint. Well, hopefully that's not, that's true as well. But it's interesting to see on page thirty, that it's, it takes a new governor to change things. So why is it each time we get, you know, an institution that needs change, that you have to have a new governor? I mean, it should be working properly at the beginning. So it's, it's heartening to know that. But why is it take, why does it take that, that change of attitude and perspective to hopefully make things better? And thirdly, on asylum seek, unaccompanied asylum seeking children, there's mention of there being a hundred and seventy two threshold. So I'm not quite sure what the figures are now. But what does the threshold mean? Is it, is that the maximum that will come to Leeds, or not? Thank you.
Who'd like to pick up those three items? Jo?
Thank you. Three really, really pertinent points there. You're quite right. Incidences and recognition of ADHD and autism, as we know, nationally, regionally and locally, have reached significant proportions, and is being considered very seriously at national level. Because the, the resource that we have across the country, not just around diagnosis of these, of these neurodiverse conditions, but also the provision of support is insufficient at the moment, as we know. We in Leeds do struggle with demand, and are working together across health, social care, to determine our, our arrangements and improve our arrangements for diagnosis and support. The arrangements that we have in the city for oversight and assurance is the SEND and Alternative Provision Partnership Board, which many of us sit on, I sit on it. And we are working with, with Mariam and others to look at our current SEND offer, to self-assess, and to identify our strategy and our improvement plan, which we already have. But we need to make sure that it's live, that it meets the needs of children and young people and their families in relation to send support that they get. But I can assure the committee that not via the LSCP, although we pay attention and look for assurance around the safeguarding of this cohort, but the SEND and AP Partnership Board has the overall assurance and oversight of those arrangements in Leeds. I don't know whether Mariam wanted to say any more about that.
I'll come to the other two points, councillor Jenkins, if that's all right. And I'll just, I'll start with Wetherby. So as you know, with, Wetherby is on our local authority, in our local authority. However, the running of Wetherby is outside of our remit. What we do have, though, is we have really strong arrangements via our social work, via a social work team that's at Wetherby linked to our integrated safeguarding unit. I sit on the Youth Custody Service Safeguarding Board, and as part of the local authorities that have a YOI, that part of the use of Parva has been authorised. Any incidents of Parva will be reviewed by them and presented at that board. So I sit with the other authorities on that board. We also shared openly, as local authorities, our objection to the use of Parva on young people. Our independent scrutiny, along with Julie, has visited Wetherby, met with the governor there, who is really receptive to working with us on change. I can't comment on the change of governors and, and culture, but I would echo that the current governor is really willing to work with the partnership. They are part of one of the subgroups. And, you know, we do all we can as a partnership, because these are children in our area. And so we do everything we can as a partnership to ensure that we can influence and make positive change. So along with the other regions, the other local authorities, we drive that work for the best interests of those children at Wetherby. In relation to the unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, maybe it's not an appropriate choice of word. The hundred and seventy two, it refers to, we work with Migration Yorkshire, along with the other local authorities in our region. And depending on the size of the city, child population, etc., you are allocated a proportion of the maximum children that will be allocated with you, to you as a local authority within that cycle. So that's what that refers to. So Leeds takes children through their national transfer scheme. There are times where we pick up children from hotels who were wrongly assessed, but mainly through the national transfer scheme. And we work with our partner local authorities and with Migration Yorkshire to really understand support, and make sure that those children receive the support as any looked after child in a timely manner. So apologies for any confusion there, but that's what that refers to.
Councillor Jenkins?
Yeah, one, one quick thing that I forgot to mention about custody suites, and it relates to neurodiversity. I just wondered, because it mentions about beanbags as being quite a significant method of calming a young person or child down. And I just wondered, because many of the, because I'm a SEND governor, that we use sensory pods as a means of calming children down, if you like. And I just wondered whether that sort of might be a reasonable adjustment in terms of a different approach to young people who are in, who perhaps are in the neurodiversity spectrum. I know it takes money, but might be worth it.
Yes, certainly, in terms of the pods that you, you described, they are a very good way of calming children who are maybe in a, an agitated state when they come into a custody environment. It's also a way of, of gaining that compliance, if you like, without having to use more significant restraint techniques. Obviously restraining people against hard floors and using handcuffing and suchlike has its, its risks as well. So it's certainly something within a West Yorkshire police custody environment. We have those pods in every one of our active operational custody sites, which are there for the staff to use should they be required. We also have another, a number of other options available for us around things that can be given to, to children that are neurodiverse, and to, to help them to, to cope with what they're going through in that custody environment. So even simple things as balls and tactile things to hold and work with. Time, time is prioritized around exercise in, in the open air and suchlike. But the, I think the main point is that the approach generally to, to children in a custody environment is that it should be a, an environment of last resort in terms of the, the interaction with that individual. And we should minimise and, and limit the amount of time that that individual stays within custody. Obviously, when we are dealing with more serious offences, that's got to be balanced and taken into account. But that's the general thing that's taken, taken going forward. One of the roles that I undertake on a daily basis, alongside the three superintendents that work with me at, in our custody suites in, in Leeds, is to do a check and a, and an understanding of who is in custody from a child perspective, how long they've been in custody, what provision is going on, and to gain reassurance that those things that I've just described are happening. And I hope that assists with some further reassurance.
Just on the point of neurodiversity and autism, I know that our, will be a significant amount of high schools in particular are actually working with the Safer Schools Police Officers to address, you know, serious youth violence, but also the criminal exploitation of, of children. And one group that they prioritise is those who are neurodivergent. And I know this from personal experience, because my son, when he went into high school in year seven, was, spent a day with, with some of his peers, and discussing kind of choices, and with people who had been formerly in gangs, who had been through the criminal justice system, and were now working with young people to try and prevent that happening. There is nothing in my son's life that would have necessitated the Safer Schools Officer, along with his teachers, to identify him, apart from the fact that he's autistic. I'm very open to persuasion. I'm very impressed with people. I normally see things in kind of black and white terms, and doesn't see the nuance. And he doesn't know when, he doesn't know when people are being sarcastic, or never mind when, you know, people are maybe fibbing to him, or, you know, exaggerating, or lying. So I want, I want to say a big thank you to our police officers, to our schools, because it's now very much a factor that, yes, he can look at his background, and who his parents are, and where he lives, and all the rest of it. But actually, the fact that he has, he is neurodivergent makes him vulnerable, and therefore the schools and safer police officers are working with them. So, and I'm, I'm just hopeful that goes on in every schools, and I'm sure it does, where there are safer police officers, safer police officers.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Councillor Jenkins, see you. Thank you very much indeed. We've gone to councillor Manaka.
Thank you, Chair. And it's really great to, to have this report, the LSCP report twenty twenty four, twenty five. I was more interested in page thirty eight, you know, the Silver Maze, and, and, you know, the lessons that have been learned, and, you know, the whole audit itself. I, I am more in particular interested in, in, in the multi-agency that has been mentioned here about child exploitation. And I think I'm bringing this closer to, you know, in, in terms of criminal exploitation. And I was just wondering, with the holistic approach, will, will the Silver Maze, eventually, I think they do report to the, to the Gold Maze as per page thirty nine, will they be looking at, you know, the holistic support to the parents who see that their children are going to be exploited, but they've got nowhere else to turn to? Sometimes some parents would speak to the teachers, and some might not, or might not even know where to go. I am aware that with the, I've looked at the, the Leeds Family Hub flyer, which says that concerns around neglect, abuse, and exploitation, which is part of what is written on the Leeds Family Hub, which is the new hubs coming. I'm just wondering whether, will there be a particular person or officers or somebody that can be approached in terms of the, you know, criminal exploitation, and parents can just kind of like, report, instead of maybe them going through any other systems in reporting their concerns about their children and exploitation? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor?
Yeah, in, in terms, in terms of a, a set group of officers for that report, not, not specifically. But what, what we do have is we have a specific team that works around the recording of child sexual exploitation and child criminal exploitation cases, that work very close with our partnerships to identify concerns and, and areas for focus. I, I would advise any parent, if they're wanting, if they're wanting support and advice from the police, to, to make that report through, into ourselves, through the, the normal lines, either online or through, through the 101 system. And that will then be, be picked up and, and dealt with. There's also an opportunity through the local neighbourhood policing teams. So there's a neighbourhood policing team covering every area of Leeds, where officers will engage and work with, with families that are, are concerned and make the necessary referrals. But I don't have a group of officers specifically that are, are effectively waiting, deployed to, to be, be spoken to directly by, by families with concerns around CSE and CCE.
Councillor Manaka, okay? Sorry, didn't catch that.
My apologies, sir. I did not have my, my, you know, the speaker on. I, I was hoping that I'd get to kind of like, views or answers on that. But also, just to have the second question on this. Will, I know that you, on, on page thirty nine, you are saying you will be bringing back this report as it is in its early stages of development. Will we be kept up to date in terms of what this team, the Silver Maze team is doing, and whether will they be working also with the youth workers? Because most of the youth workers know, you know, what is going on in terms of children that come for football and all that. And they are aware of things that are happening, which I think some of the teams mentioned on the Silver Maze might not be aware of. I don't see it being mentioned in detail. Thank you.
Farad?
Thank you. Just in relation to kind of the role of the Silver Maze, you know, the, the Silver Maze is a partnership group, has third sector providers on there as well, chaired by a senior police officer. And part of our, all of our services, including, all of our social care services, including the youth services, their views are considered there. The Silver Maze group looks at learning, looks at key themes, including exploitation. And I know that they are planning to get together to look at the child-first principles, and how we strengthen our offer. and how we strengthen our offer in relation to children as victims and therefore how we work with the perpetrators. And that's the work that I mentioned earlier as well with Carleen Furman, et cetera. I think, I can't remember which councillor colleague used the word adultification earlier. And I think it's really important that we think about where children can be criminalised, treated as older than they are and the, you know, the focus is about treating them as victims. So that's very much a priority for Silver Mace this year. The governance arrangements are that, you know, you've mentioned the Gold Mace, but also all the subgroups report to the exec. We have our independent scrutiny, we have the partnership executive group, and that's where the reports follow through. So that's the governance arrangements for that reassurance. But the Silver Mace, very much so, the next I know, speaking to the chair and speaking to children's social care representatives on that group, that it's about everybody understanding exploitation and supporting parents at the earliest of stages, but also those young people to identify the signs and very much so that all practitioners understand that. As Steve mentioned earlier, you know, in relation to policing, there's not a specific team, but that's a deliberate approach in Leeds as well because we have so many practitioners. You know, you mentioned schools, youth workers, but children can present at hospital with an injury, et cetera. So the partnership work around exploitation that was referenced in the JTI report is really strong about that awareness to exploitation across the board. Whatever your role is, children might present to our families with one issue, but actually there's something else going on in the background. So everybody's aware of the signs of exploitation and understands where to refer people to for support.
Thank you, Farah. We have just two more, I'll have to draw a line with this item then. Shinaaz.
Thank you, Chair. I firstly just wanted to echo on councillor Jenkins' view on the neurodiversity and autism. It'd be really interesting to look at from a parent's perspective as well, if they have, if they're on the spectrum, if they have autism or are neurodiverse, how does that affect the child or their life? And it'd be great if we could look at that as a priority next year because it is so prevalent right now within families and Leeds. So in the report, it discusses a point about disproportionality of, it recognises a high number of children from black and mixed heritage families that are held in secure estates. And it also talks about children who are, it talks about a number of children from racially minoritised communities, a percentage in year, in primary schools. But if you look at the functions of the independent scrutiny in Leeds, there's nothing in there, a priority around auditing EDI or whether our services are culturally appropriate or culturally sensitive, especially with how culturally diverse Leeds is. I think it should be a priority in the functions and not just maybe assigned with providing assurance that the whole system works effectively. I think there should be a priority in there around EDI and culturally appropriate services and support. Thank you.
Farah.
Thank you, Chair. So the role of the independent scrutiny follows the national guidance and David's role and to provide that independence, that scrutiny, that professional advice to the partnership. We recognise disproportionality nationally and in Leeds, children from diverse backgrounds and different characteristics, including children with send are disproportionately represented in certain groups and in particular in the criminal justice system. And that's where the work of the Silver Mace and the child-first approach that I mentioned is coming from, so that, to make sure that if you are from a particular group, you're more likely to be seen as an adult or older than your age. So that that's the focus is looking at the child as a victim and understanding the whole child's needs. And that's, we have, we discussed when there was a national report published around racism and safeguarding from the National Safeguarding Panel. And as the review advisor group, we considered, so the executive thought it was right, and it was that that work sat with the review advisor group. And we, along with David Derbyshire, Independence Scrutiny, considered carefully where it was best, how we progress the advice and the findings of that report. And what we thought is actually to have something separate, a separate work stream on disproportionality, discrimination, wouldn't best serve Leeds, but in every work stream that actually diversity, the discrimination, all discrimination is considered and it's a consideration for everybody working in that area. So what were the findings from that report were shared across all the work streams, all the subgroups and will be incorporated into our development of our family help, so our partnership family help offer. As part of the family help work, we are looking at having a family reference group. So as voice and influence, we already have a parents' voice group and we have a different children's voice and influence group, but we're thinking of a particular group as we go through the development of family health to look at that as well. So it is a priority just because it's not separate, but actually we will have those children that are most vulnerable, children, they're going to be more at risk of discrimination in all the different areas. So that's why it's not a separate work stream. But I just want to reassure the board that the findings of that report and the data in Leeds are a consideration across all the work by the partnership.
Thank you very much indeed, Farah. Last speaker on this one is councillor Goodall.
Thank you, and this leads on from what Shinaaz said, and thank you for the report and thank you for the work you do. On page 33, it says audit work that takes place across the partnership needs to be more widely shared and the voice of children and families should be included. And you've just been talking about some of that kind of work, but continuing a theme from the last meeting, what are you doing to make sure more recent immigrant groups are included in that because perhaps they're less familiar with how the system works?
I can tell back the work we're doing in children's services. I've referenced the work that we're going to do as a partnership, which is about having diverse voices from different family groups in that development of the family help partnership. And we've met with representatives, advocates from different groups and they've shared kind of some of the challenges for those. So I'm really keen that we do incorporate that work. In respect of children's services, we've been working closely with adult services and looking at safeguarding communities. And the director of adults, children, adult services, adult and health has been leading on that work, but our principal social worker is involved in that work as are we, to really look at how we empower, engage and help and work in partnership with the communities across Leeds, all communities and all families across Leeds. Absolutely, that's a priority, but we're doing it jointly with other directorates across the council.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much indeed. That's the last, I think, recurring question on this particular item. We move on to the recommendations. For the scrutiny board to endorse the work undertaken to further strengthen the children's safeguarding arrangements in Leeds and for the scrutiny board to continue with support of the city's multi-agency safeguarding arrangements for children and young people. Could someone propose that, please? Second up, councillor Kieran, all in favour? Any against? Looks like carried unanimously. Thank you very much indeed. Chief Superintendent Dodds, you're more, and Joe, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I'm sure you've got other things to do. So thanks very much indeed for your contributions today. Similarly, Phil, you haven't got very far to go. And thank you very much again. We'll see you at some stage in the future, I'm sure. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight, which is the post-16 send transport, more of an update, I think. And just before we move into that one, I'd like to welcome members of the public who have been in touch with me on a number of occasions over the last few months, and I'm sure they've been in touch with children and families as well. So it's very nice to see people here and I hope that Elen, well, possibly enjoys the wrong word, but certainly listen to what's being said over the next hour or so. councillor Hayden, would you like to lead off on this one?
Thank you, Chair. So this is paper updates on the implementation of the children and young people's transport policy, which was agreed in December 2024. It responds to the conclusions of the scrutiny board working group from October 2024, which highlighted key areas for consideration. Ensuring exceptional circumstances are assessed flexibly but consistently, strengthening safeguarding guidance for parents and carers, reviewing the indexing of personal transport allowances, addressing concerns around the 20-mile travel limit, ensuring regular market testing of private hire costs and confirming adequate transport through independent travel coordinators and the travel training programme. The report also outlines the scope of the autumn 2025 review, which will assess how the policy was implemented and communicated, the impact on young people and families, operational effectiveness, handling of appeals in exceptional cases and lessons learned from interim arrangements. So the board is asked to note progress made to endorse the scope of the review. And I would ask the board if they've got any comments on the review of the implementation of the policy and any further suggestions that they would like to see go into the review before we go, before we actually start the review of the implementation of the policy and support the commitment to implement improvements for the 2026/2027 application cycle. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Who'd like to speak second on this one? Is it Maria Moore or Phil?
Thank you, Chair. I think there's not a great amount to add in addition to councillor Hayden's comments. I think the recommendations from scrutiny working group in 2024, the report outlines in terms of those exceptional circumstances, we undertook a review or a pause of the process in the summer this year, kind of reflecting on those recommendations and concerns raised by families around the application of the exceptional circumstances. So we did take a pause in the summer to have a look at how exceptional circumstances were being applied in the assessment of applications for support. In terms of the safeguarding concerns that were raised by scrutiny last year and making sure that advice was available to families, whilst we've got published information, I think it's fair to say that we recognise that there's opportunities through the review of the implementation that we're carrying out this autumn to consider how we can further strengthen that. Obviously, the inflationary concerns that were raised last year, we're continuing to look at and we'll keep reflecting on those as we go forward. The scope of the review, as councillor Hayden has outlined, will look at the implementation processes, the impact of the application of the policy on young people and families. Obviously, until we've been through the first cycle, it's very difficult for us to see and predict what that will look like. We now have that information and we can see how the impact, we hear, as you've mentioned, councillor Flynn, the concerns that families have raised about the impact on them and how the implementation of the policy has affected certain children and young people. And we need to reflect on that and consider that going forward, in particular around the appeals process and communicating that really clearly to families. And we're really keen to look at in this autumn review, the data around how the implementation of the policy has affected children and young people in terms of the number of appeals and the outcome of those appeals as they've happened.
Thanks very much indeed, Rebecca. Anybody else that didn't want to speak? Okay, just before we open it out to the committee, I just wonder if during the course of your answers, you could cover what the current appeals position actually is, you know, in terms of have you actually finished it? The, I know there was a hold for a number of weeks, but you've had a huge number of appeals, I think, to go through and it's caused some internal sort of pressures, I'm sure. So if you could bring us up to date on that one and perhaps also cover what's been suggested would be a disproportionate effect on children, young people with educational health and care plans, transition, et cetera, et cetera. If, you know, this, well, the policy is into force now, basically, but, you know, if you've got any information at all on that particular aspect. I'll open it up to the board now.
I've got four questions. Want them all at once? Okay, so it says about involving families in the review. So can you say a little bit more about in what way parents, carers and young people will be involved in the review? For example, will there be working groups or meetings? Will there be someone independent involved in the review process to hold the local authority to account? In terms of the appeal process and the applications, feedback from parents indicates there's several people winning appeals. So it feels like something's going wrong with the initial part of the process and I'm guessing that's costly and time consuming. So will we be looking into that and seeing if there's something missing from the initial process that is making all those appeals happen? And lastly, paragraph 42 on page 87 said ward members have been kept informed through regular updates. I just wanted to check, I might have missed something, but in what format are you saying that ward members have been kept updated? Thank you.
Councillor Goodall, Rebecca, would you like to pick those?
Thank you. So in terms of the review, there's obviously been a lot of contact and communication with families over, and in particular the Safer School Transport Group throughout this last six to eight months period. So we have a lot of information from families already. The review is looking at the implementation of the policy and how that has, so we have information from the appeals that have been submitted, information from that regular communication we've had from families throughout this period already. So there isn't an intention to directly invite families to give us more of that information because we do feel like we have a significant volume of communication from families already telling us about their experience of the implementation of the policy. In terms of whether anybody independent will be part of that review, I think we need to really make clear that the scope of the review is about the implementation and the outcome and the impact of that. So the, any recommendations about how we can improve the process going forward will be taken as a decision by Julie, as the director of children and families, about, because the policy, the expectation is the policy will remain as agreed by executive board in 2024. So the review is not about making a proposed change to that policy, it's about ensuring that we're doing everything we can to implement that policy in a way that families feel supported and understand how we use the policy and how it's applied. You mentioned councillor Goodall about families, a number of families winning appeals and a concern that that means that earlier in the process that it's not working in some way. Again, I think the easiest comparison is around the admissions process. So for us, we have to make sure that it's a really, the stage one of the application for school transport support, that there's a really objective way of assessing that initial application and that anybody who reviews that application would result in the same outcome. So whatever that decision is, is against the policy. So it's a really almost binary decision, does it meet the criteria, does it not? The appeals process gives the opportunity for those really individual, personal circumstances to be discussed and reviewed and to give the opportunity to make a different decision. So it's not necessarily that the decision at stage one or in the initial application is wrong, it's that we have to be really clear and really fair to everybody that they give us, they provide the same level of information on their application that they, you know, in the chosen boxes almost, and then that the team who assesses that, that anybody who reads that information will make the same decision. The personal circumstances and the opportunity for a family to come and speak to a panel of independent people and outline their case and their reasons why they feel that exceptional circumstances apply is really, really important. And I don't think it shouldn't be something that we try and reduce the number of cases that get to that process. I think we have to be fair and objective in the application of the policy. And so for the vast majority, the information that they provide on their application will be enough to be able to determine their outcome. For families... For families where they have exceptional circumstances, we need to continue to have a process where they can come and have that conversation within an independent panel to put their case forward as to why they meet exceptional circumstances. But we recognise and what we want to review over this autumn is how do we make sure that that process is as timely as possible and that families feel supported through that and that it's not a case of winning or losing. It is about the process and seeing it through fairly and openly for everybody.
I'll take the rest.
Sorry, thank you. And the world member update, sorry, I wrote it down as well, I apologise. So the world member updates, my understanding is that we've been circulating information either in response to concerns that have been raised directly with us or where we've had a significant number of challenge from a group of families in one particular world or other. As we go into the review and we have that data available to us, we will obviously make sure that that's a communication that's shared with all world members about the outcome of those.
I personally met with some world members who have had concerns from, to update them as well. And I'm very open to any world member who wants to, you know, meet with me about any cases that concern their individual constituents. Also, we circulate into the councillors' updates. I think it goes out weekly, we've put things in there. I'm sure councillor Goodall, you read it end to end.
councillor Goodall?
Thank you. That's useful information. I think that young people and families will think that they've got more to contribute to the review. So I would urge you to put something in place to allow young people and families to give more feedback. Thanks.
Rebecca, just before we move on, could you give us an update on the appeal sort of situation? You know, are you through them all? Are you nearly through them all? Just a progress report. I know it's been a huge undertaking, but it would be very helpful.
Thank you. So to date, there have been 602 applications for post-16 transport support that have been received. Of those, 484 have been approved for support in some way, which is around 80%. 68 children have been awarded an exceptional award allocation. There are currently 34 appeals outstanding. 20 of those were appeals or applications that were made prior to the June deadline. And so since the pause in the summer and then the reinstatement of the process, they've been through the stage one appeal and are now awaiting the stage two appeal hearing. So there's 34 appeals in total outstanding. 20 of those are currently on interim arrangements that are due to end at Christmas.
The interim arrangements that were made, interim payments and stuff, will that still be sort of a consideration going forward? Wouldn't rule it in, wouldn't rule it out at this stage. We need to get through the process.
So until we've been through the full process, it's difficult for us to say. So it's not ruled in or ruled out. The eight of those 20 appeals have been arranged for the next couple of weeks. The remainder of the appeals, we're hoping to have cleared before the end of the Christmas period and will obviously take that call at that time.
Good answer Rebecca. councillor Edwards?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention there. I can, thank you very much Rebecca, and I can certainly vouch for councillor Hayden meeting ward members. I know that you met my colleague councillor Layton and we've had regular conversations. I would encourage all members, including opposition members, to take councillor Hayden up on that offer. I wanted to follow up a bit on what you're saying Rebecca in relation to appeals, but also when it comes to the applications process, because I know from residents that I've worked with who've gone through that process, it's incredibly stressful from a parent's point of view, also from an officer's point of view. It takes up a lot of time and I'm aware that particularly for parents, as they're getting closer to the start of term time, they're very conscious of the clock ticking and particularly if the schools are not in places where their children or young people would be able to get to easily using public transport. So I'm very conscious of that. In terms of the information gathering procedures, I wonder if you could say a bit more about how robust you think they are at that initial stage? Is there more information that could be gathered at an earlier stage? Are we sufficiently capturing all of the information that is needed to make informed decisions? Informed decisions that reflect the needs of parents, but also which reduce the number of appeals and the number of decisions which go to appeal and particularly when those are appeals which are ultimately granted. So, yeah, it would be helpful to know more about the information that's gathered already. And going back one stage before that, so when parents are at the point of considering an application, how much guidance is there around the application process? How much guidance is there around the criteria, including around exceptional circumstances? What that means? And is that information that's available for parents at that pre-application stage sufficiently accessible? Because we've got a wide range of parents across the city and I think it's important that that information is fully accessible to people and not only people who are used to dealing with local government systems, but also people who might not have English as a first language, who might struggle with some of the information that's there. So it would be helpful to know more about that as well. Thank you.
Rebecca?
Thank you. Absolutely agreed that the appeals process is challenging for officers and families. And I think what, as we go through this review, what we need to understand is, has there been? So I think the comment on the number of stage two appeals that have been granted is something we need to reflect upon and we need to learn from what's happened this year to understand, is there a different way of us setting up the application for transport assistance so that we're gathering more information at that point? Can we make improvements to that? What has the, how do we assess those applications consistently and fairly? So reviewing how that was done this year in terms of the appeals and the concerns that were raised around the application of exceptional circumstances. We were really clear and I think it was agreed at the scrutiny working group last year that having a list of children and the kinds of exceptional circumstances that would be granted support would be, could be restrictive and could cause concern. Because if there were different exceptional circumstances, there's always something that comes up that just doesn't quite fit that list. But if you've got a list, it has to meet one of the things on the list. So how do we make sure that we aren't restrictive? There are opportunities for us to consider perhaps sharing with families examples of times when exceptional circumstances have applied in the communication rather than as a prescriptive list of what will or won't apply. In terms of the accessibility of the information, again, you know, the policy has stood for a very long time, as always, in terms of transport and who is eligible or not. The revised policy has been communicated in the same way. This review this autumn gives us the opportunity to consider are there further opportunities in terms of our communication strategy and how we share that? I think our silks are very engaged with the process and understand now the need to communicate with families at the consultation point. We know that our casework officers in SEN SAP understand the impact of decisions around the transport policy on school placements and consultations. And hopefully through this review, we can make sure that we're sharing with those casework officers the need to have that conversation with families at the point of transition planning to consider actually, have you thought about, you know, the transport policy may or may not allow you to get transport support for your child? Have you considered that when you're thinking about where you want to preference as the place for your child to attend? Is that answer, is that okay?
If I could just come in Chair, yeah, just to build on and support what Rebecca was saying there. We depend on our schools and our education settings to work with parents about, as well as other partners, about the whole process of post-16. And when I say post-16, I really mean post-year 11 because especially children, young people with SEN won't be necessarily in a chronological age in terms of their year group. So further education is what we're talking about, post-year 11. So I would very much to holistically look at the whole situation when applying for post-year 11 education, for that further education, as to not just the suitability, but where the setting is. And look in a really holistic way about how it's going to fit into their families, into their families' lives, et cetera.
Thank you councillor Hayden. councillor Edwards, you happy? Okay, councillor Stevenson?
Thank you Chair. Yesterday, the secretary of state for education said that diluting the home-to-school transport scheme would be akin to sending children back to the Victorian era where they have to walk to school as we head into winter. I'll leave that lingering like a recent election campaign. Two technical questions Chair. The first is, in terms of the review, once, if the review finds that there needs to be a change of policy, is there a budget provision to recompense those who fell between the announcement of the policy and the U-turn of the policy if that is an eventual outcome?
The policy is not under review and there will be no U-turn of the policy. And as for no child is going to be required to walk?
Seems like a bit of a talking shop really, if there's going to be no formal review of it. Can I ask about consistency? Whether we're looking at the impact of consistency in terms of state support, be it for people who are post-16 or in work specifically? I just want to pick up, there was a BBC article yesterday which featured one of our least citizens who's in the room today, Talia, who's 15. And it made me think of a case I dealt with not too long ago in my ward where an adult with additional needs is actually working as an employee of this council thanks to the access to work scheme. So three days a week, a taxi comes, picks her up from her home in Bardsey, drives her into Marion House, picks her up at the end of the day and takes her back home. This young lady is exceptionally bright and does a good job for the council and presumably is quite bright because she had a decent education. So just thinking ahead to Talia's case, it may well be that next year, which goes to post-16, she won't have access anymore to transport because of this policy. But yet, three years later, she could then access the access to work scheme to be brought to this very building to work for us under the access to work scheme. So in terms of consistency of policies, have we looked at or done any work around the falling in and out of state support based on decisions locally and then schemes that DWP run nationally?
Just before we come on for that one, it was quite a good sort of question asked about the review. There is a review of the policy taking place in the current sort of term. What is the purpose of that review if it's not going to be reviewed? The policy's not going to be reviewed at the end of the autumn term?
We're not reviewing the policy. The policy was, is less than a year old. We are reviewing how the implementation and how that went and how we can do it better. The policy fits with statutory guidelines and is necessary because we need to save money after 14 years of savage cuts to this back councils' budget. We don't need, sorry? Right. So we are now, because it's not a statutory responsibility, post-year 11, post-16 transport, or whatever age the child, and I'm not going to comment on an individual child or an individual situation. And the policy is not going to be reviewed. We are going to review the implementation and how we can get it better for the 26, 27. But it's, to just clarify that, we are suggesting now, because the policy is statutorily, you know, compliant in the way where all the local authorities who have had to take this very difficult step have been given guidance on how to improve, it's on that they took a blanket approach and I'm referring to Derbyshire in particular. We have not taken a blanket approach and we've been extremely, and we've insisted on being very, very flexible, which is why we don't have a list of exceptional circumstances. I am nervous about giving examples because the exceptional circumstances have been so varied and so individual and unique that I would just encourage any parent who, you know, to talk to us, to give as much information as early as possible. And I want to thank the officers as well. This has been really, really difficult for them and nobody wanted to do this. And it's been really, really difficult for them and they've shown great empathy and strength and intelligence when it comes to implementing this policy that nobody wanted. And it's, so I just really want to thank them as well and all the families who have worked with us to, in this implementation. And I am very keen to involve families. We have got a wealth of information and correspondence from families and, you know, we will take all of it into account.
I think there was one, I don't think there's an answer to it, but councillor Stevenson asked about the consistency of the current policy against the access to work policy. The access to work policy isn't a matter under consideration today, but I just thought I'd mention it in passing.
Yeah, I mean, there always is. I mean, we're a very complex country, aren't we? With, you know, and the transition from childrens to adults is a difficult one because adults have very, sometimes quite differing policies. And I see it with our silks who, you know, and I'm not blaming anyone in the NHS here, but if I give an example of our silks that end up paying themselves out the education budget for medical equipment that then when the young person turns 19, the NHS pay for. So, you know, we have these discrepancies and I think the access to work scheme is brilliant and I am delighted that that young woman is working for us. And we've got another brilliant example, he doesn't get a taxi to him from, but somebody who went through our individual travel training, tried other careers, but now is, and he's neurodivergent himself, that's where his SEN diagnosis is. And he describes independent travel training as being life-changing, so much so that he now works for the council and trains and supports other young people like himself through the independent travel training. So it's a brilliant career for him, but also those young people who are going through the independent travel training, of which some of them have of which some of them have been allocated through this policy, and two thousand young people have been trained to travel independently over the last few years. But they see someone very like themselves, you know, training them. So somebody who knows exactly how they're feeling, exactly what they're going through. And I think that's really, really powerful. And so I'm really proud of this council that it is employing people with... Because we know that people with SEND diagnosis and SEND needs, that only six percent of them have proper employment, and that's something we're very, very anxious to. So yes, we will continue to work with our colleagues and adults, as has been mentioned in the previous report, and try and get it across. So our SEND Futures event at the arena, you know, worked with all different parts of the council, but also with employers across the city and colleges across the city, trying to get the best possible careers and information and guidance for our young people with SEND as we possibly can. But it's not a perfect system. And there will be other schemes and benefits that will play into this as well. But we're just doing the best we can in order to get our young people with SEND to the right education setting in that phase. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. It wasn't a criticism, it was just pointing out that they were two completely separate sort of issues, that was all. Councillor Stevenson, are you going to come back?
I guess just a quick one. If independent travel training is the key to reducing the number of people who are in pursuit of transport, I wonder whether, either at exec board level or at scrutiny board level, whether we're now lobbying for the DWP to introduce it in their Access to Work Scheme to reduce it there. If you're saying it's such a great scheme to reduce the number, presumably you're therefore keen to reduce the number in Access to Work?
It's something I could take up. I mean, independent travel training's not suitable for everyone. And where it is suitable, we very much encourage. And this policy is supporting more young people to go through that. So I'm hoping that actually, as we progress, there'll be less people in the Access to Work needing bespoke transport, because they'll have been through, if they're suitable for it, independent travel training when they were in education. But we could look at it as, along with an employment and skills and in adult social care, as something that we could maybe work together. Because there's maybe people who are eighteen, nineteen, twenty, who under this policy would have been given that independent travel training, but didn't receive it because we didn't have this reduction in the number of people getting home to education transport. I don't know whether I made any sense there, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. councillor Downs.
Thanks, Chair. Three things. One, Helen, when you were saying about to review the implementation of the policy, but you wouldn't change the policy itself, you were looking to improve it. Surely if something came through from that review which highlighted an improvement to the policy, you would consider doing that? That's point one. Point two, Rebecca, when you were saying about the exceptions with appeals, you were saying that there's a number of things that would be, you know, you would provide for, but then you didn't want to sort of make a list because there'd be people that weren't on the list. Wouldn't it be an idea to at least have a basic list that would perhaps reduce the number of appeals if you had people on that that could be excluded, or sorry, included, as it were, right from the very beginning? And then the third point I just wanted to make is, within all of this review, has anybody considered the spare seat scheme that Wokingham use, which has been raised to me by one of the parents who said that it would be a very useful system to add into the policy? Thank you.
In terms of, and Rebecca will be able to, in terms of the spare seat, our brilliant colleague, Richard, is already implementing that. In terms of the spare seats on the current routes of the buses, the school buses, so that we're actually doing that this term as well. I don't know what Wokingham have done, like, is it Wokingham? Yeah, what there specifically, but we have our own spare seat policy going on right at this moment. So in terms of...
Just very quickly on that, sorry to interrupt. I've not seen it, so if it's possible to have a copy of that, that would be very useful. Thank you.
We haven't got an actual policy, it's just Richard is like...
Well, if it could be drawn up, it would be useful to know what is happening on that. Thank you.
We can get some information to scrutiny on what's been... Actually, that will become as part of the review in terms of what's been happening this term. Yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and we'll pop it in the review. In terms of reviewing the actual policy itself, I mean, we're always open to the fact that if an amendment does need to be made and something comes up that we feel is an amendment, I'm not closing that down. But this isn't a review of the policy, it's a review of the implementation of the policy. But we'd also, with any policy, be open to putting in amendments should we feel that it was needed. Your second... Oh, about a list of exceptional... I know, I've had this conversation, and I'm really quite stubborn on this. And, you know, I might be... But it's... I don't want even a basic list. But we have, with the pause, we had a look at where we'd given exceptional and what was coming out of the appeals process, and built up and then kind of made sure we were applying things fairly with what came out of the appeals process. So we will be able to get a clearer picture of what, in this review, of what circumstances were given, exceptional circumstances. And we'll get a clearer view on that, having gone through. But I am very, very resistant to having a list, because there's a couple of reasons. Parents won't see themselves on that list, and so they won't apply. And they might, their circumstances might well have, but were so unique that they would never have made a list. And I know of circumstances with parents who, very early on, were given exceptional circumstances, and their circumstances would never have made a list in anybody's kind of outlook. I also... So it's those parents, you know, falling between the cracks and saying, oh, well, this policy doesn't apply to me, when it really, really could, and I really would not want that to happen. But I'll let Rebecca come in with, if she's got anything to add to that.
Thank you. I think our spare seat scheme that reflects Wokingham is just our route planning. It's as boring as that. But I think we can definitely ask Richard Jackson to look at how we can articulate that for scrutiny board. The exceptional needs list, I think the review, one of the reasons that the review, we're saying very clearly that it's about the implementation of the policy, is that to make changes in time for March 2026, when the next round of young people would be applying for transport support for September 26. The decision to finalise the transport policy in December 2024, that work took twelve months to do the full public consultation and result in the final policy. So we're very clear, there isn't the time for us to do that. And the point of such a substantial review and finalising a policy is that that will be the policy for at least generally kind of three to five years. Obviously, if there's something significant, then we have to review that and have conversation with councillor Hayden and relevant decision-makers if there were to be any changes. But in terms of doing that in time for families applying in March 26, you know, a complete change of the policy wouldn't be appropriate or possible. The key and the thing that we can achieve through the review are those things like, does the application form need amending? You know, some really kind of operational but really helpful things that will help families to understand the policy and its application in more detail, to understand the kind of form that they fill in and what information they can give us at that point. And I think understanding, as councillor Hayden said, who has been awarded exceptional circumstances in the 25-26 academic year will really help us make sure that those people assess in forms at the first stage and through the appeals process, understand what's exceptional and not. And again, as councillor Hayden said, I think these are about exceptional circumstances. And so actually, if you're providing a list of the things that happen commonly, then it starts to not be so exceptional.
councillor Downs.
Yeah, if I can just come back. I understand exactly what you're saying, and I wouldn't want anybody to miss out. But all I was trying to say was that whenever I see in life, like, for example, on licensing, we have to have, in areas of cumulative impact, people have to provide reasons why we should overturn policy, but there's no guidance as to what those reasons are. And I just think it would be helpful, in this instance, to give some examples of ones that will be okay. But this is not an exclusive list, you know, just to say, if these apply, great, we can reduce the steps, but please still apply, because there's a chance that you'll still get in. I think you can have the best of both worlds there, just to help the policy, but not to exclude people. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Downs. Maria.
You spoke quite a lot about the travel training. Have we got enough members of staff to deliver the travel training? Because there is a bit of a... Is there a waiting list for them? And how is that going to impact on the people now and the people next year? Also, I totally understand what you're saying about the exceptional circumstance list. I still, I agree, I do think there needs to be one. It almost feels, and I think we knew this, that this cohort of families are being used as a guinea pig to see what we're getting right and what we're getting wrong. We are overturning appeals, which is good. But in the centre of all this, there's still families, and they're still having to go through all these appeals. Their lives are really, really difficult at the best of times, so making them go through one appeal, two appeal, when there's no clear boundaries as to what the exceptional circumstances are, feels a little bit cruel.
Again, if we had a list of exceptional circumstances, then it would be cruel to families who didn't feel that they fitted into that list and therefore didn't apply. And it's horrible going through the appeals process, it's horrible for the officers as well. But at least it gives families the opportunity to come forward and actually tell us, you know, in a very confidential way, you know, what their family circumstances are and whether, you know, and we are awarding... So sixty-eight families have been awarded exceptional circumstances. That wasn't all through appeals. That was in, you know, in application. A lot of them were at the application stage as well. So, you know, our officers are considering exceptional circumstances. They're doing it on an individual family, by family basis. And yes, and there will be always families who feel like they've got exceptional circumstances. And if, you know, it's about supporting those families, because... And also, the first year of any new policy is going to feel like the families are a bit guinea pig, you know, it's going to feel like that. But we need to know what we've got right and what we've got wrong. And that's going to happen at the first year of any implementation of any policy, when any change is made. And I trust that, because I know them, I trust that my officers, that the officers who deal with all their families have done so in an empathetic and sensitive, in a sensitive way. And I know the toll it's put on them. So it's, yeah, would I have wanted this? No, you know, not at all. I don't want to put families through this. I just want all young people of whatever need they have in this city to be able to get to education. I'm a teacher, that's what I want. I want them there, being educated in the best way possible. So this is really, really difficult. But this gives us a chance to review what we've done and how it's implemented and what we've got right and what we haven't, and make it better for next year's cohort. That's just the nature of life, isn't it? That hopefully, you know, we'll get it better for next year's, and that's upsetting for this year's cohort. But I'm trusting, because there were 602 applications, that the vast majority have got something that they can work with and that has been able to fit in with their family life.
Maria.
Yeah, just a bit about the travel training. Have we got enough staff?
I'm not... We wouldn't suggest... What's the word I'm looking for? We wouldn't apply individual travel training if we didn't have the staff to... But it has to be quite a small cohort, mainly because it's not suitable for the majority of young people with SEND at that time. It may become when they're seventeen, eighteen, that's when they're ready for independent travel training. So we wouldn't allocate it if we didn't have... But it doesn't get... And I'm sure you're aware of this, so apologies. But it doesn't mean that the person, the young person is ready to independently travel come to September the first. So independent travel training can take years, and it's done as part of their education. And it's a stepped process. So it forms part of their skill base and their skills training in further education. But I'll let Rebecca come on to that.
Thank you. It is part of the review, as well as us looking at the impact on children, young people, in terms of the analysis of access to the transport support that's awarded, access to the ITT. In terms of the team, the team are fully staffed at present. There obviously is a pressure on that service at the start of September, in terms of those families that are wanting to take up the offer of independent travel training at that point in time, which does at times lead to a small waiting list for when people can get started. But the review and what we're wanting to do is make sure that we've got the resource that's reflecting the how awards are being made, and that we have got the right match between the resource that's available and the demand. The other thing is, it's probably worth noting, and something that we'll be picking up in the review, that not everybody who is awarded independent travel training chooses to take it up. So we have to also go deeper than just the data about what's awarded, because not all families choose to take that offer up once it's been made.
Thank you, Rebecca. councillor Manacher.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is more of a comment regards to page ninety-six, the further education sufficiency. It's really great, and I'm putting it back into my personal experience. My daughter, who's special needs, knew from last year that she wouldn't take A-levels going forwards, and it was really great to see that Leeds City Council and all partners... Oh, sorry, is that... Okay.
Okay, right. councillor Stott Thompson.
Thank you. This actually might tie the two together slightly, so apologies if it confuses things even further. Thinking especially of young people on the outer edges of the city, who are sometimes travelling literally from one end to the other, aware of one case recently, and the huge impact that those long journeys have, really keen to see that this is looked at in more depth, as settings are sorted out. Clearly, it's harder for those whose children are now approaching sixteen, seventeen, who are suddenly thrown into this. They'd already chosen a setting, now they've got to figure out how on earth they get there. But in the forward planning, I'm really keen to see that that's looked at, and as it then links into the FE sufficiency. So if you're travelling from one end of the city to the other, that is tiring, it takes up much of your day, is that appropriate? Does that make... Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. And thank you councillor Manacher. I think, yeah, it's very much at the forefront of my, my mind and I know in the team is to, that that sufficiency, especially around further education and send and those places. Because what we, if, and there are plans, so we've, we're seeing the rebuilding of the South Silk, but already their post sixteen provision has moved to White Rose and that happened a year ago and that's been really, really successful. That frees up, yeah, we're rebuilding it so, at the moment, but it will create more places at South Silk for under sixteen send places. So, yes, we're working very hard and to, and the area based planning that we're seeing in two areas of the city, yes, it will focus on primary, but then primary send places will very much part of that. And having places for our children and young people with special educational needs and disabilities to go to near, in their communities, near to home, is an absolute priority of mine. I see it working so well in my own community where children who went to school with, with my children, yes, haven't gone to the same high school, but have gone to one up the road and literally they, when they're coming backwards and forward because they've got alternative send provision. And so, but then they can see each other when they're coming home from school, they're in their community, they can, you know, and it's, and that's, that's really, really important for me, that people are as close and in their communities as possible. But then at post sixteen, further education, young people will want to travel a bit further afield and will want to take up our extraordinary opportunities that the Leeds City Centre has, for example. I know that's much more difficult for, for our children and, and young people that are on the outskirts of the city and getting that transport right is really, really important to me. But, yeah, I'm very passionate about, you know, young people being able to access provision as close to their communities and close to home as possible.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Councillor Thompson, can I come back? Okay, just, we come to the end of this particular item, just, just a couple of points I'd like to make at the end. There's been a lot of discussion about exceptional awards and I think we all understand the difficulty in having a specific list. It's, it's an impossible thing to do. But I think knowing people and speaking to people and residents and all the rest of it who are in this kind of a position, they often aren't aware that they will qualify for any of this kind of stuff. So I think we'd like to be satisfied that all parents are made very aware that they can apply, you know, to be considered on the exceptional award thing and that nobody, nobody misses out and I think we'd probably settle for that. We'd like, we had a discussion before the meeting started, the review that's being carried out at the moment, we'd like to see the results of that review as soon as humanly possible when it's being completed. Thank you very much indeed. And to that end, we would like to suggest an additional recommendation at the end of this, which I'll go into in a minute or two. And just finally, on consultation, you will never please all of the people all of the time and you're lucky if you please some of the people some of the time. And any number of people have contacted me to say that they hadn't been, they hadn't been consulted. It's, it's an area we will come back to when we're talking about the review at the end of the autumn term. And I, I suppose I'd just like to be satisfied that you, you, you know, you are listening to everybody that wants to make their views known on this particular subject. It's very contentious, we know it's non statutory and it's like everything else, once people have got this in place, if you take it away, then it causes absolute sort of havoc. So, not today, obviously, but at some future time, if you could just assure us that the consultation that you've done has covered every possible avenue that you could possibly have covered, okay? We'll move on to the recommendations. There are, well, there would be five of them, if you're going to the last one. And I would refer you to page eighty one, where the, the recommendations are. I'll just give you a minute or two to sort of look at them. The additional recommendation that we're suggesting is that the findings of the autumn twenty twenty five review of the implementation and impact of the children's on young people's transport policy be reported to scrutiny once complete. Is the board, committee satisfied that we would like to add that to the list of recommendations? Yeah? Okay, any, anyone demurting on that or abstaining or in favour? Okay, if you've all had an opportunity to look at recommendation A, B, C, D and E, could ask for a proposal that we accept those recommendations? Councillor Jones. Another second, Councillor Stevenson. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Like to see it carried unanimously. Thank you very much indeed. Right, moving on to the, the next item, which is further education in Leeds, an update. Councillor Hayden, would you like to lead in again? Just before we start this particular item, we're just, we've, we've been on for a couple of hours now. Would you like a comfort break? Right, in that case, we'll have one. Hi, everybody. If we could resume the meeting now. May for everyone to sit down. No, I won't. Yeah, I was just going to start. All right, this item is further education in Leeds, an update. I'd like to welcome Andrea Cowans, Colin Booth and Alex Miles, who presumably will be taking part in the discussion at some sort of stage, I hope so anyway. Councillor Hayden, would you like to lead off on this one?
Further education provision in Leeds following earlier scrutiny work. It focuses on post sixteen place efficiency, including the impact of demographic growth, increased demand for entry and level one and to two programmes and the expansion of provision across the city. It also outlines the allocation of ten million pounds' worth of capital funding from the Department of Education to support infrastructure development, which has now been passed on to providers to support provision in the city. The report also updates on the work that is ongoing to address challenges around NEET levels and the sufficiency of specialist provision for learners with SEND and EHCPs, education, health and care plans. The report reflects strong system wide collaboration and sets out the next steps in developing a strategic citywide approach to post sixteen planning, including work to improve transitions, inclusion and progression pathways. And I'm really pleased that our partners, some of our partners are here today, so I want to thank, thank them for being here. I also want to mention Colin in particular, because he's leaving us, not happy, but we have got Bill coming in, but as, is it principal or CEO? Anyway, leader of Leeds City College and has done an incredible job and his legacy will be felt around the city for many, many years to come. So just a huge thank you to Colin. Happy retirement, wishing you many, many long, healthy years of a really good retirement and, and just a big thank you for all you've done for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hayden. Who'd like to lead on this one?
Yeah, hi. Just to introduce myself, Andrea Cowans, I'm the interim strategic lead for NEET with Children and Family Services. It's a part time role that I do on secondment from Luminate Education Group. So, so just to declare that sort of interest and two roles that I play in this, in this piece. I just wanted to pick up from councillor Hayden's introduction and I won't go into loads of detail because obviously you've had the paper and this is a follow up to a full session at scrutiny and a working group. So it's just to pick up some of the, some of the themes that, that are continuing, that we really do still need to be aware of, working around and planning for. In terms of the context, a reminder of the legal context for the local authority and that's around the sufficiency for the number of places in post sixteen education for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year olds, so that's year twelve, thirteen and fourteen. The also, the resource implication... Also, the resource implications around education being very much that the funding for post-16 education is not made through the local authority but comes from central government, both in terms of revenue and capital funding. However, funding for support for young people with high needs and education, health and care plans does come through local authority budgets in that context. The other thing I would add to that is in terms of the additional value that education funding does offer into the system. We sat through the earlier discussion around safeguarding and just to recognise that every young person in education is effectively in a safeguarded situation, so that added value that comes in through the system's working. Some of the key risks around not meeting these duties fall back on to children and families' life experiences and outcomes for young people and the lack of ability to meet the skills priority for sustainable growth for the local authority as well. So this is quite a big picture piece that we're talking about. In the context of the paper, since the paper for yourselves has been written, we have had a white paper published by the government, which is the Post-16 Education and Skills Strategy, which means that we will need to do some thinking and updating around some of the work that we're doing in this area as well. In terms of the content of the report, I just want to draw members' attention to a couple of key points. Firstly, our NEAT and NOT known performance rates continue to be a challenge for us as local authority in the last three months' period. Reported, we still ranked in the lowest quintile of local authorities with 1,714 young people reported as either NEAT or NOT known in that period. So that is a huge number of young people that we are talking about. It's important to keep the numbers as well as the percentages in mind because the numbers remind you that every one of those numbers is a young person and a family affected by these situations. So since the last scrutiny outing, we've made some significant progress. We'd already in 2425 secured additional revenue funding for FE places and independent training provider places in Leeds and that's outlined in here. And I'm pleased to say that providers did deliver a big chunk of additional places and that shows through in the participation in learning graph that comes within the pack that you have yourselves. And you can see that the participation in 2024 had increased by over 870, sorry, 884 more young people were engaged in education and training in that academic year. It's important to notice that that additional 884 young people would have been young people who'd have been on the NEAT register without the interventions and the actions that had been taken by the partnership. The second piece to update on is around capital funding. So the DFE awarded some one-off capital funding pots, additional capital funding pots to two local areas back in the spring and Leeds and Manchester both received £10 million to help them with the need to create more places, like physical learning places for young people. We went through a procurement process and two providers were successfully awarded the £10 million, so Leeds City College, £8 million towards Livingston House to make a start on the work with Livingston House, Leeds College of Building, £2 million towards their work on expanding the North Street campus. So it's really delighted to see that those providers have committed to having additional places for September 2026, which will hopefully help us make some dent in the numbers there. I've just also referenced colleagues to the September guarantee, paragraph 22. It's worth noting, and I make reference to this because it does come up in the Skills White Paper, we do record the offers that go to year 11 and year 12 young people to make sure that they do have an offer to continue in learning the following academic year. And what we noted is that by the end of October, we still had 1,000 young people recorded with no offer of a place in learning in the city and we've not yet seen how that's going to translate through into NEAT figures. But it is concerning because obviously without an offer, the chances of being NEAT by the end of October are very, very slim because there's actually not much left to go on in terms of provision other than flexible start programmes. So I've sort of given a headline introduction to the overall sufficiency issues. And in terms of post-16 SEND sufficiency, it's an area that I think it's really important that we do focus on, both the SEND, the high needs and the work with our most vulnerable young people in the city and their transition into post-16. There's a work stream that's been underway, being led through the, I can't remember the name of the team, but it's around post-16 planning and making sure that we've got enough places planned for young people to move through to. And the principles around that piece of work that's taking place is around supporting specialists, the expansion of specialist places, expanding the number of young people with EHCPs in mainstream places as well, taking an area-based planning approach to this and also working with independent training providers to make sure that they are better supported to provide education opportunities for young people with high needs as well. I'm not going to go into any more detail, but probably better if I open it up to questions and clarification.
councillor Jones.
Do we actually have any data on these young people who are not in education basically? Are some of these children, people, well, adult, young adults, sorry, I get told off for that elsewhere, where 16-year-olds can live with that. Do we actually know have some of these young people been suspended from school, not completed education and what proportion of that is that and how do we address that? Because I'm really concerned because these will be the young people who probably get dragged into poorly paid jobs, particularly as technology evolves. If they miss out on that, I'm concerned that we will be letting them down significantly. What also concerns me, and this dates back to something else earlier on, is do we actually know which schools have been to and do they have a high suspension rate or an exclusion rate? I think that's something we've not addressed and something we shouldn't look at because I'm aware for my own grandchildren is that different schools have different rules and that what will also happen is certain schools may decide that if they can exclude children, it may make their results look better. And I'm aware that that goes on. So I think that is a piece of work that needs to be done. And to be honest, the statistic here absolutely shocks me that we are so low down on that list. And I think we have to, as a council and working with ourselves, is we need to address this once and for all. This is something that we cannot allow to continue.
Yeah, thank you. I think the point you raise is a really valid one because you're really right to be concerned about those young people that you've mentioned. So the young people that sit in that alternative provision excluded from schools, severe non-attenders, these are young people who are more likely to feature within the NEAT cohorts. There is a dataset that sits behind the high-level data here that's provided by the performance team in children and families and we do know what those numbers look like. A piece of work was done as part of the Alternative Provision Review last year, which helped us identify the numbers of young people who fall into those categories. And one of the things that we've highlighted in this report and in the work that we're doing more generally within the post-16 forum is the need to make sure that we have the right source of provision available to re-engage those young people in learning and make sure they feel supported and also do that with an ethos of inclusion and belonging so that we've actually got that built in from the start with those.
Can I just add to that answer a bit and just shift the understanding and the debate a little bit? As councillor Hayden said, I'm about to retire. I've spent more than 40 years in further education and most of it, one way or another, with a good focus on young people who are not in education or training. This is the first time in the whole of my 40 years where I've seen the number of young people who are not in education post-16 driven primarily by the lack of places. Throughout a 40-year career in education, engaging with young people who are NEAT was about engaging with them and trying to persuade them come into places that were always available. This is the first time where the nature of the young people who are now NEAT in Leeds and in other places in the country is much more varied. So for Leeds City College, we've been running waiting lists for several months now, both pre and post-September. So a significant number of young people who are NEAT are young people who applied to come to college and were turned away because there is no place available for them. So that they're not necessarily the same young people all the time who've been excluded from school or have other difficulties, although there is a good proportion of those. They're a much, much wider group now because we just don't have enough places for the number of young people. In partial answer to your other question about young people in schools who are not generally excluded but are not attending for one reason or another, and I understand your point. One way of illustrating that is at Leeds City College, we run a 14 to 16 programme for young people who are not in attendance in school or not attending regularly or who are on the elective home education role. We have well over 1,000 applications a year for 120 places. That's from young people who are effectively not in education mostly or partly not in education. So the picture of a young person not in education and not wanting to engage isn't necessarily true now. That illustrates if we have more than 1,000 applications from young people who are not attending school, who want to attend college, but we can't give them places because they're not available, that paints a slightly different picture about who's not in education.
I think if I could just add to that, I think both really valuable contributions because it is a really complex picture. The other thing is that we've got so many NEATs now because there's so much work being done about our unknowns and I'd rather know that they're NEAT than not know what's happening with our cohort of young people. So our NOT knowns have come right down because of the work that's been undertaken by the team. It is a much more complex, I think also to build on what Colin was saying, that we have to look nationally at the curriculum and that there's a third of our young people and that's why there's 1,000 applications to go to college when they're 14 to 16 because the Michael Gove Grammar School dream of, you know, eight academic GCSEs does not, we're trying to push triangle children into circle holes and it doesn't work for a third of our kids. So we really need as a country to look at the curriculum, have those alternative and more vocational but more practical, but just a wider range at 14 that they can engage in and that will engage them because as Colin says, they want to engage, they want to do stuff, they just, you know, school's not for them for some reason.
Can I just add to the sufficiency, I guess the FE sufficiency update? We do have a lack of spaces, we have a lack of funding, there isn't enough money to cover every single NEAT young person, but we also have insufficient resources that do the community outreach, that do the school outreach. You know, twice or three times a year, we get a group of volunteers that ring NEAT people to find out where they are. That's the best that we can do at the moment with the resource that we've got. So we do have a really big sufficiency need within the resources that support, you know, pre-NEAT, risk of NEAT and then once they are. And we just don't have community engagement, parent engagement, outreach activities. So whilst we've brought in more providers and more providers have filled the, you know, 800 more places, that's nowhere near the population growth that we've got as a city and we don't have the people or the resource to do the outreach that we're massively lacking across the city.
Thanks very much indeed councillor.
Can I thank you for that? That was, between the four of you, that was an extensive answer that answered a lot of the issues that I have with it and I now know a damn sight more than what I did know 10 minutes ago. So thank you for that, I do appreciate that.
Brilliant following. councillor Goodall.
Thanks. It leads on from that. I think we've got it covered, but I just want to check. So when you look at the figures for NEAT, when you're comparing Leeds with the core cities, it got worse between kind of 23, 24, 24, 25. It looks like we're saying not enough places, some issues with send provision, we're doing more work with the unknowns and insufficient resources for school outreach. Is there anything else about why Leeds? Tell me if you think that covers it totally, but is there anything else about why Leeds is higher than the other core cities? Is there something that the other core cities are doing that we're not? Or is it, do you think those four points cover it?
I think we did have that exceptional demographic growth that worked its way through early years, primary, secondary, I watched it, I watched it. And we saw the buildings go up for nurseries, for primary schools, for secondary schools and it just stopped with further education. And there was a dearth of investment, I think, in terms of capital funding around that time, which was challenging. So there was the population growth in terms of the birth population, but I think the other thing that we need to take into account is the movement of population around the country. So Leeds is an inward growth city. We look at the huge investment that we're doing in employment and skills and the, you know, attracting big employers to the area. Well, the people that work for those organisations have families and they have young people and those families come. So they might not be born in St James's, but they might have moved in, you know, year seven or year nine and actually they've never been counted therefore in that population growth. And then the third factor I would say would be the, you know, the local authority's duty around unaccompanied asylum seeker children and making sure that as corporate parent we are looking after those children and that's seen a growth in our ESOL provision in the city from a couple of hundreds to, you know, just short of 400 16 to 19-year-olds in that provision now. And that is full with a huge waiting list at the moment. So, you know, we've got some challenges around meeting those numbers too, but that's my take, there's probably other.
A slightly more historical answer, that for school places across the country, local authorities have planned schools places in great detail. There has never been any system for planning post-16 places. There's been national capital investment, but neither the DFE nor local authorities planned capacity. So we've had at least 20 years of random capital investment. So different parts of the country and different cities have different capacity, basically because we've had a system where nobody was planning either for the present or the future in terms of capacity. If you add on to that the demographic growth in Leeds, which wasn't a mystery to us, we knew it was there and we knew it was coming. But even in the latest rounds of capital in the post-16 sector, which were a few years ago, there was no relationship drawn between where the need was and where the capital went to. Now, the DFE have said that will change in the next round for next year, but what that means is that regardless of whether that opportunity is an opportunity for Leeds City Council to bid for capital or whether it's an opportunity for individual providers to bid for capital, we have a real, real urgent need to work in partnership to lobby the government to get the money into Leeds one way or another. And that will need to come from the very top of the council lobbying the government. And that will need to come from the very top of the council lobbying the government between now and next spring. There will be a round of capital investment nationally in around April next year, predicted. We need to make sure collectively by working together between now and then that Leeds gets a bigger slice of that cake than anywhere else in the country. That's the challenge in front of us. If we don't do that, what the numbers say is that we're currently 141st out of 151 local authorities. The demographic growth in Leeds over the next few years and a number of other factors will push us down towards 151st.
Did you want to up your mic? Yeah, they're both absolutely right and I will spend the next few months lobbying the government very, very vociferously as I did last year and I will, they're very sick of me. Well, and I will continue to do that because, but it isn't recognised nationally and it's been said to me that we're only of one of two places who's got this demographic growth. I don't know what we were doing 15, 20 years ago, but we were having babies and then there's all that inward growth as well. I've contributed to this growth. Molly's in year 11, Richie's in year nine, they're going to go into FE in the next year or so. So I apologise, but yes, and it was, and I can't, because I've spoken to the Professor Emeritus at Leeds University, who is an expert on this, and he's explained why it has happened and my generation waited until into our 30s to have babies as a general rule and therefore there was a time lag when people weren't having babies. Then there was this big bulge and that's the way it's working through now because we've got the opposite problem in our nurseries and primary schools now of people not having enough babies and therefore our primary schools' reception classes are only 78% full. So yeah, it's always a moving picture. The point that Colin makes about planning of further education, yes, we do a lot because we have the lever to plan our school places. That's dissolved a bit in terms of academies and schools not being local authority schools anymore. It doesn't exist really, we don't have the levers at FE and the funding that has come through over the last 15 years has not looked, has been to individual institutions, not on a city basis. That kind of changed last year when we got the 10 million and it was given to the local authority because we have the statutory responsibility and for the first time in a long time, we actually got the money to do something with. And I want to thank our institutions for really good applications into that procurement process.
Councillor Goodall, happy to have you here. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, Chair. I don't really have anything to add in terms of recommendation A, but on recommendation B, just one thing I want to mention. I did mention this to councillor Thompson in email, so forgive me for raising it here but the papers did ask. Recently I was doing some research around the transition from key stage four to key stage five, specifically around disadvantaged kids, but in terms of attainment and there appears to be a trend forming in that kids who have an unconditional offer at key stage five tend to underperform what their target grades would be at key stage four. And the signal is it's a demotivating factor. So, you know, I've got a place anyway, I don't need to quite work as hard for that qualification. And I think a number of different institutions are raising this as well now nationally as well as in Leeds. So when we're asked for future areas of scrutiny, I think this is quite a critical one really because it speaks to attainment. Disadvantaged pupils appear to be disproportionately affected by this as well and it's proven very difficult for providers at key stage four to achieve what they know their kids can achieve and to push them to it if kids are then told, you don't need those grades anyway because you can go on to a college somewhere to do a level one, two, three and it's unconditional. So in terms of an area of focus, this could be a really critical one for the city and actually it could be quite pioneering in terms of the impact nationally. So I would put forward that in a future work stream, this would be something we should really, really be looking at about what's happening in Leeds and how we can influence nationally. And to do that, we will need all the partners around the table to feed into us to look at that. Originally suggested it through the 14 to 25 strategic group to look at, but it's actually something I think probably scrutiny ought to have side over as well.
Councillor Thompson, would you like to add anything?
Thank you. So this was fairly recent, just last week, so I have forward it to councillor Hayden. Sam Low has responded saying yes and to the various other factors around it. So we'll pick up with councillor Hayden with 14 to 19 partnership of things. So the young people from the poorest socioeconomic backgrounds are often at schools without sixth form, so they're having to travel and that creates a huge challenge. We know there've been some challenges around people expecting to have places, not having them. So yeah, something we'll follow up through 14 to 19 with councillor Hayden and otherwise. Thank you.
Can I just bring in, because I know that Nikita, Leeds College Building have already addressed this, so I don't know whether you want to... I know that Leeds College Building have already addressed this and when I went to a visit there, they now do not give unconditional offers. So they, because the schools, they've worked with the schools and they've worked with the schools and this has been raised to them. So I'm bringing Andrea, sorry, about whether this will be across the, but in specific, our colleges are already on with this and addressing this. So Leeds College Buildings give conditional offers to, which helps the schools out with their key stage four.
Thank you councillor Hayden. I think we're cross-party probably agreed that this is an area of work we probably need to look at and Rob's already taken a note of it, so thank you all very much indeed. Maria.
Hi. Just going back to the children in NEAT, is the impact of EHCPs affecting that figure? Because we know there is a massive weight on EHCPs now, so does that affect kids not being in school, the parents have taken them out of school, waiting for replacement?
So if we look at the data, it tells us that you're more likely to be NEAT if you have an education health and care plan than if you don't. However, I'm not sure whether it's a process thing because whilst there are some challenges around getting the right provision and engaging and managing that transition to a post-16 provider, a lot of targeted work was done around delivering EHCPs in time to make the further education offers this year. However, there was still a shortfall in terms of the plans being completed on time and I think some did fall out of the target area. I don't have the actual details of that here, but I don't know if anyone else around the table might want to...
No, I mean, we have prioritised the transition years, but I don't know the actual number of those who, that haven't been completed in time, but it was a priority. Year six and year 11 were a priority in terms of getting their EHCPs completed.
One thing that I would just add to that is that it's really important that we recognise that there's an insufficiency of places for young people with high needs as well as for the population in general and in fact that is compounded. So I think that's a piece of work that we've got lined up in the next work stream so that we can begin to look at what that looks like and making sure that the place planning approach does mean that everybody in year 11 who has an education health and care plan has provision made for them and understand that provision and get the offer in year 12 and beyond.
Okay, Maria.
Sorry, can I just add to that briefly? One interesting point to note, this is true in Leeds, it's also true in a lot of other areas of the country. Young people with high needs in further education are far more likely to be in mainstream education than they are in the school system. So we have far less discrete provision, so, and even the discrete provision we have is not entirely discrete because a discrete course is still taking place in a mixed environment. So that capacity issue we said earlier, we talked about earlier, almost has a bigger impact because some of the young people who are referred with high needs or education or care plans are simply being referred to provision that's full. So there isn't then a place. So we have had a number of referrals and it exacerbates it if they're late because obviously if they're late, they're more likely to be full. But we've had a number of referrals and the answer is, well, we're simply full.
Just to add as well, I think we've seen a big rise in young people being home educated and that again goes back to our sufficiency of outreach and community outreach and how do we get post-16 options into those young people? Because we have post-Covid and a huge rise in home educated young people. And also with the increase of independent training providers that have come into the city that are not necessarily known to the local authority or are struggling to get on to the commissioning portals for the local authority to then be named in an EHCP. So there's a few kind of systematic challenges that the city is facing with the, you know, it's great that we've got an increase of new providers, but those new providers not being known to people is causing some of the delays and issues and then not being able to be named on an EHCP because they're not known to the local authority. So we are doing a lot of work behind the scenes to try and resolve that as well as recognising that there's a whole bunch of work that needs to happen around outreach and engagement.
Thanks very much. Maria, are you okay? Okay. Last question from councillor Renshaw.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say thank you very much to Leeds City College because my daughter went there at 16. Obviously she felt she wasn't good enough to stay on at school and so she wanted to draw a line under it and open up a new chapter and it's done the world of good. She's now in year three at university and she went through the pathway scheme, I think, where you can get them on to the route into university that she never thought she would do because she never thought she was good enough. The empathy dog worked wonders, we've now got our own. So I just think they're doing an amazing, amazing role and there's more young people now who feel that they're not good enough at school, they're not one of the top brackets or they're wanting to come to Leeds City College because they know there's more chance of aspiring there, there's more chance of having open, you know, opportunities open to them. I just think it's amazing. So I can't thank you all enough.
Not a very bad note to finish on, I would think. Thanks very much, Karen. Okay, just moving on to the recommendations, just two this time.
Chair, councillor Manaka was trying to get in on this on the last slide. Sorry to put in.
Sorry Chair, thank you. I think I tried to get into this before the agenda was on. Just to say another huge thank you for, you know, to Leeds City College. Myself as well, my daughter special needs, but the spectrum is not that she could have an EHCP. And last year she knew that she will not do A-levels and after some few conversations, she's now with Leeds City College. I'm just glad that, you know, the way the system worked for us in terms of registration and all that was really smooth sailing and that I really recommend them for that. But it would be just as an ask if they could try and request any information for the child from school because this is like a huge leap. Schools can transfer information, but with school to college, I was asked if I could request the school to provide that information, which is special needs and what it is that they need to be aware of. And that's, you know, just to, you know, I know that in page 103, you, you know, paragraph 29, it does say there that there's further work is needed to accurately predict. So I'm thinking that could be part of the prediction that could come in, but overall really, really glad, you know, she's happy and yeah, thank you Chair.
Anyone want to come in?
Yeah, just the challenge around information sharing between schools and further education means that until a child is enrolled at college, the college can't request the information from the school, which is why the parents ask to contact school and provide it. However, we are looking at streamlining the information sharing system and the portals and that work is already being piloted. So hopefully within, even if it's not this year, by next year, the information sharing process will be vastly improved. Just for reassurance around safeguarding concerns, that information is shared through CPOMs securely within that network. So that's a different system, so...
Okay, can I? Thanks very much. I was a little premature before. I think, seeing as it's come in an extra time, last question.
Thank you Chair, my apologies. So just touching on so NEATs not in education, employment or training, with the, with over 1,000 young people on a waiting list, what are we doing to kind of broker in terms of employment and employment support and supporting young people to get into employment? A lot of the time when young people get into education and then they finish their education, they lack the experience of employment. So maybe this might be an opportunity to consider brokering relationships with corporates, yeah, with enterprises, with businesses to see if we can get on more apprenticeships and look at kind of schemes in that sense as well.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that have happened to support that. Obviously raising participation age means that all young people are required to remain in education and training until the age of 18. So we can't move people straight into work, it has to be with a training element. There's been a procurement exercise for some underspend on UK SPF, I don't know what that stands for, but it's a Shared Prosperity Fund, so that was combined authority money which was commissioned out and to successful providers to provide, I think it's 160 places of re-engagement activity. So it's not learning contracts as such, but it'll be things like personal development, work experience and so on. On top of that, there are flexible start programmes in a number of areas and the independent training provider sector, which Alex represents, have lots of programmes which are about delivering a study programme with work experience incorporated into that. There are also some late start programmes in college. However, the numbers won't add up to 1,000 and that brings us back to that challenge we've got, which is we actually just need more capacity in the city. So as hard as the transition workers and so on that there are working and as well as schools and colleges do improve their retention for post-16, we're still going to be left with that challenge in the short form.
And I'll just add on the apprenticeships side, whilst we would love more 16 to 18-year-olds on apprenticeships, the transition from being NEAT or at risk of NEAT to go on to an apprenticeship that are predominantly level three now is just too much of a big ask for a lot of young people. So we do need some of those bridging programmes and also we are looking at how we can increase the supported internships approach across the city. And we actually have a session next week looking at how we can work around getting that offer much more well-known across the city as a referral path. But apprenticeships is a whole other thing we could lobby the government on and whilst it's great that they are being seen as the gold standard, then being at level three, four and five is just unattainable for some of these young people. So there's more we need to do to recognise or get businesses to recognise 16 to 18-year-olds being, coming into our companies on to an apprenticeship and that's something that is not quite where it needs to be at the moment.
Yeah, if I can just support Alex on that, and it is Alex, but it's, yeah, it's again...
Yeah, if I can just support Alex on that, and it is Alex, but it's, yeah, it's again, the government are looking at this and dropping the need for maths and English and developing another, so a practical English and maths exam, so which is more, if you're going to be a joiner, there's a lot of maths involved, it's not necessarily GCSE type maths that you need and that you need to have recognised, so the government is on with, as I mentioned earlier, changing the curriculum in these sorts of areas, but that doesn't help us right at this moment in time, but Alex is absolutely right, the thresholds for apprenticeships and that have been for a long time, and that's a good thing because apprenticeships could, in one way, apprenticeships should be seen as aspirational, because they are, and they're a really good way of going about your education and training post-16. However, we need apprenticeships that are level two apprenticeships, for want of a better phrase, and that actually can accommodate those young people leaving school at 16 and the majority of children from disadvantaged backgrounds go to schools without a sixth form and that will need to go elsewhere. There's also a thing about our sixth forms varying their, so varying their offer and being supported to do that, so that children in our outer areas don't have to travel into the city centre. I mean, I love travelling into the centre for sixth form, but, you know, if we could get in some ways, and so there will be a piece of work around that about supporting sixth forms to vary their curriculum away from just A levels and maybe working in partnership with colleges etcetera to deliver things on in different parts of the city. But all these things take time and they should have been done a few years ago. But I'd like to thank the independent sector as well, independent training providers do an incredible amount of work with a small cohort, but it has to be small, of children and young people that haven't accessed traditional education for quite some time and getting them ready to go, either go back into education or go into the world of work, they're invaluable and there was a lot of work done, although we couldn't give any of the £10 million to them per se because they are private providers. I know that Leeds City College and the College of Building are going to work with the independent providers to make sure that they are part of, and we increased from four to eight, well six that got really in the city, because that's traditionally something we haven't had as much as the other core cities, to go back to councillor Goodall's question about what's different, for whatever reason, we haven't had the same number of independent training providers in the city over the last 10 to 15 years as other places.
Thank you councillor Hayden, it's an ask, okay. I'm afraid somebody's come in in Fergie time, just as we thought we were finishing. councillor Renshaw.
Thank you Chair. One of the comments that was said to me is that when I left school at 16, I was a child. When I started Leeds City College, I was an adult and I was spoken to as an adult and I was treated like an adult and any decisions I had to make were as though I'd just grown up all of a sudden, whereas if children stay on at school, they don't get that sort of treatment, they continue being that child until they're 18. So I think that's one of the factors that probably draws people to Leeds City College. So thank you.
Thanks councillor Renshaw. If there are no other questions, comments, thank you very much indeed. Recommendations to note and comment on the work to increase place efficiency across the further education sector, including the allocation of the £10 million of government funding, and to identify any future areas of scrutiny activity linked to further education in Leeds, which I think we've already picked up on. Could someone propose that please? Secada, councillor Renshaw, all in favour? Any against? No abstentions? Yes, another 100%. Thanks very much indeed. Unless you three are desperate to listen to the work programme, I'd just like to thank you, Andrea, Alex and Colin, thanks very much indeed for coming in, and Alex, if this is the last time we see you, we'll, it won't be, oh, it's Alex, sorry, okay, in that case, thanks very much indeed for all the help you've given us over the past, all right? Thank you, all right, cheers. Okay, moving on to the last item, which is the work programme.
You're delightful coming here as well.
We'll have to change that. Okay, just moving on to the work programme, I think we've covered this in some detail before the meeting actually started. We've talked about the Ombudsman Report, the White Paper delay is going to cause some issues around the Working Party etcetera, etcetera, so Rob will be talking to the directorate about the November work programme where there may be a bit of a switch with the Ombudsman Report coming in, and when we know a little bit more about the post-16 review after Christmas, that will come into probably January, February, January, February I would think. So essentially that's it from this one, just the date and time for the next meeting, which is on the 25th of November, pre-meeting for all board members at 1 o'clock, start time of 1.30. And as usual, I'd like to thank councillor Helen Hayden, Phil who's escaped, Rebecca, Maryam and Farah for their usual sort of contributions to this, very valuable, exceptional at times. Thank you all very much indeed, committee members as well, and I'll see you all in